Hello, good morning everyone. Welcome to the Governance Committee on the 9th of March. It's good to see you all here this morning and I'm glad we've all made it to the new room. I'm councillor Julie Gocut and I will be chairing the meeting this morning. Please can we make sure that we maintain social distancing at all times? And can I request that mobile telephones and other equipment be switched off to silent mode so as not to disturb the conduct of the meeting, please? There is no fire test planned for today. If there is an emergency evacuation, please take instruction from the town hall staff. And as we all know, the assembly point is Tudor Square. I'm now going to go round the room and we'll just do a quick sweep with everyone to introduce themselves and I'll start with our vice-chair. Councillor Sue Alston, Forward Ward.
Councillor Mhammim Maru, Cookton Crosspool.
Councillor Seanad Myer, Richards, Manor Ward. And I just want to say I actually really like the fact that we are sitting here like a proper committee about to do some work rather than in splendid isolation in the town hall, uh, council chamber.
Peter Garbutt, Nether Edge and Sherrill Ward.
Christine Gilligan, Hillsborough Ward.
Councillor Mayrie, Donald Ward.
Alexander Pollack, Assistant Director for Governance.
Gillian Duckworth, Director of Legal and Governance.
Thank you, everyone. Can I please ask, Jay, if we have any apologies this morning? Thank you. Item three is the exclusion of the person public. There are no items where we need to do that. And item four is declarations of interest. Can I ask any members any declarations of interest to be told? And because councillor Dale's had a public transport issue and has just walked in, I'll allow you to introduce yourselves, please.
Councillor Don Bell, councillor for Shadown, Leicestershire.
Thank you. At item five, we have the minutes of the previous meeting. Are members happy to approve this as a correct record of the meeting held on the 22nd of February, please? Does anyone have any issues? All happy? Thank you very much. Item seven is the paper on the committee system structure. Again, as with last month, unfortunately, the paper was produced a little bit late. We apologise to members and the public for that. We all do appreciate the speed at which we are having to work and the pressures that everyone is under. And of course, it is imperative that we do get on with business and make sure that we are in a position to take the proposals to the full council later on this month. Therefore, I am happy to proceed with the paper and I'm assuming that members are also content with that. Thank you. I've missed out there, Wal, because it's at the bottom of the page, public questions. I'm jumping the gun. So we're now going to rewind very seamlessly and go to item six. Sorry about that, Wal. You have a public question for us. Sorry? You don't have any que-- oh! Right. It's a regular monthly thing with me, questions, so yeah, you should have just said, Julie, I want to ask you this. You've missed the opportunity, Alex. Sorry about that, Wal.
No problem. In Wal's absence, I'll read his question for you. So it says, "What has the Governance Committee learnt from other large cities in the core cities group that are already run using a committee system like Belfast and Glasgow? How has this influenced the design of the committee system you are proposing for Sheffield?"
Thank you for the question. In response, "There are no other core cities in England which operate a committee system. The legislative and governance environment in Scotland and Ireland are very different to England, to say nothing of the political and social context. And neither Belfast nor Glasgow has ever had a transition from a cabinet and leader system to a committee system. Since they have always run a version of a committee system, officers met with senior leaders from Belfast to explore whether a link would be constructive. As an example of the differences, Belfast council is not responsible for adult social care, housing or planning, and they aren't able to run local area committees because of, amongst other things, sectarian considerations. We've been very transparent about what we have learnt from other councils throughout this process, going back over several years, with six case studies in the evidence pack, in-person witness statements from several other councils, and back in 2019, a site visit to Melton Millbury as part of the scrutiny inquiry." Thank you. So now we go to item seven, the committee structure. Alex, are you leading us through that this morning?
I will. I'll just say a few words. If I'm starting to sound repetitive, it's because we've been doing a very deliberate process over the past few meetings of the committee. At the beginning of your last two or three meetings, I have said that it is important, as you consider today's paper, to make sure you bear in mind the thread that runs through this work, back through all the evidence that you had presented to you, aligned in an organised framework, both from other authorities, from a range of other evidence bases, from public engagement process that happened towards the end of last year, and also looking further back into all the feedback that the councils received through the whole process of the referendum campaigns, everything that you've heard through the big city conversation and through the scrutiny exercises that took place in 2019, and so on. So as councils are considering this today, I know that they will be having that in mind. And the report today is not only organised on the same principles as the reports you've had before, but this is in fact an update of the report that you received at your last meeting. That is longer, there are a handful more recommendations, there are a number of edited recommendations, both reflecting changes that you agreed last, at your last meeting, and reflecting further input from officers in discussion with members behind the scenes in many cases. And some of those changes reflect the fact that officers are now well into drafting a constitution in line with the steer that members have been giving. And you recall, we've been talking about this being a kind of a multi-layered, simultaneous process. So as soon as you, as a committee, began to give us steer, we began to write the bits of the constitution we could. And as we do that, of course, it throws up a few more questions and a few more issues that we need to cover. And in fact, today, there may even be a couple of things that we as officers, a bit like last time, want to raise as we go through, which will have come up since we published the report. So there'll be a few things along those lines. In addition, this time, you've got a bit more detail in the three segments at the end of every report that you would normally find, notably financial, legal and equality's implications. This reflects that we're approaching the key point of decision-making on this. This meeting is your final opportunity as a committee to edit this, to make amendments to the recommendations before it is recommended to full council. As you'll be aware, on the council meeting earlier this month, council agreed the recommendations which you had asked us to put to council about amending standing orders. So we've got a clear process for full council, at which each individual group will be able to put forward one amendment, which can be multiple, can cover multiple angles of this, but that we will have supported council to make sure is internally coherent and covers, you know, is an organised, sensible, single proposal. Because in something like this, which is so interlinked, it's important that we only put forward something that is whole and that doesn't contradict itself. So with that in mind, we hope that the cross-party collaborative cooperative process that's been going on at this committee is going to result in something that goes to council that can find reasonable favour there. But of course, there is that other opportunity for all the groups to make their political points in that setting and potentially to amend it further there. But this is the committee's last opportunity and that's why there's a bit more detail in the report on some of these other angles that you need to have in mind when you're taking these decisions. So the process, as I understand it, having discussed with the chair, is that it's going to be very similar to last time. So we will go through section by section. I promised that I would do something that I haven't done. I said that I would put in italics everything that had been previously agreed and I would leave out that and put in normal text, probably a word for that, isn't there, non-italics, anything that had changed since last time. The reason I haven't done that is because it was making the report less clear rather than more clear. And actually, I thought it was important that you consider the whole piece rather than just giving over sections of it on basis that it had already been agreed. However, obviously, I would like to encourage you not to go over old ground, if you can avoid it, and areas that have already been agreed by the committee. We hope that that agreement still stands unless there's anything you can raise that substantively has changed. So as we go through, we'll draw your attention to key aspects, but otherwise, we will let you raise to the chair where there are areas that you want to either debate or amend. We'll go through the whole report, amending any recommendations as you see fit, and then at the end of the meeting, we'll vote on the whole report as amended in order to proceed. Thank you, Chair.
So we'll start with item six in the report, which is the public engagement, participation and communications. Councillor Alston.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I've got a real frog in my throat today. Very, very briefly, we've noted the changes to these, in particular, the changes around the public questions and petitions, which we now think are much better and reflect the importance that we thought that the petitioner or the questioner had the final choice about where they took their question or petition. Absolutely appreciate the rewritten section, sorry, number 11, and also the extra emphasis that's been added with the additional paragraph, which is paragraph two, I believe, on recommendation 12, and the addition of the recommendation 14. So really, it's just to say that we think this is much better than where we were before and appreciate the changes that have been made.
Thank you. Any other comments, please?
At the risk of extending things, this is obviously an area that is critically important to this whole piece of work. And in intervening time, we've done, we've got something really quite significant in addition to this report, which I should have mentioned in my overarching statement. Sorry. So as one of your appendices to this report, you would have seen a set of slides which have been provided by INVOLVE. You'll recall that INVOLVE is the organisation that we have partnered with to help us do the sort of second phase of our public engagement and participation work, which, they are a national public participation specialist company. And we asked them to do, most recently, you as a committee, asked them to do two streams of things. One was to come back to you as soon as possible before you were making recommendations to council with something that would enable you to make recommendations to council with confidence about your public engagement mechanisms, and ideally for them to recommend some specifics to you for inclusion. And the second thing was to begin work on that longer term, medium to longer term piece of work, that's about how will the council get better at doing this over time? So you've got in your pack from page 43 onwards, some detailed feedback. Now, this is only a summary of a draft report that is in train, that INVOLVE are in the process of producing, that will come into the public domain as soon as they've got to a point where it is ready for that. There's still more conversations that they're hoping to have with other partners and stakeholders they've been having conversations with, officers across the council who've been involved in related work. As requested from stakeholders, it was about, we've told you this before, what have you learnt from what we've told you? Are you taking all that into account? And they're doing an excellent job of beginning the synthesis on that to give you something to learn from. So in consideration, sorry, when we have put these recommendations to you and the slight tweaks to them, we have been bearing in mind these pages of this report. But I'm, and I'm conscious that you may or may not wish to have a further discussion about it, but it's self-contained. Laurie, as the councils lead in this area, is there more that I should have covered? Is there more you want to add? Chair, through you, that's okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I think what you've got there is a sort of interim summary of what the conversations involved had. And to just kind of build that out a little bit, they've talked to partners in the city, they've talked to voluntary sector, voluntary sector and community organisations, they've talked to officers in the council who are practitioners in the way we take engagement and involvement through our local area committees, through people like myself, they've talked to Jason Deach, who's over there as well, thinking about the democratic participation side as well. So I think probably for members, you probably recognise some of the themes in here in terms of being challenges for us, but also in terms of some of the good practice we actually have in place. And I think there are more examples which INVOLVE are looking at in terms of the good things the council have done and actually citizens and partners have actually pushed in their direction and said, these are good things that worked well. There's quite a lot of learning in here. Some of it aligns with some of the things that people, members involved in the Race Equality Commission have heard as well, so councillor Dale, councillor Maru have heard some of those consistent themes. So it's not just pertaining to the Race Equality Commission. In that case, it shows we've got challenges in that more broadly. There's also something here about, and we can probably come back to this at a later point as well, about the equality impact assessment and how some of the learning in here should help us in terms of how we enhance participation across the committee system, but also across the council as well. Alex and I had one conversation, a really good conversation with the Sheffield Equality Partnership yesterday, we can touch on that at a later point in the papers. So I think the challenge here now is to take on some of the ideas that INVOLVE have brought forward, the issues they've raised, and then start thinking about how we embed that in a different way of working in the council, partly in the committees, in the actual physical incarnation of that when we have committee meetings, but more fundamentally in the way we go back doing our business effectively. So the next step is to run some co-design workshops. In simple terms, what we'll do is we'll have some workshops, hopefully with BCF sector people in the room and some council officers who are practitioners at it, and then start to think about what our framework looks like, what does good standards look like, what are those principles in that framework for engagement look like, co-design with people who work and live in the city. And then we'll roll that out and start talking to other community organisations and hopefully build something that's genuinely owned by the citizens and community groups and the council about how we go about doing that sort of activity. So hopefully, that's the next step. But there's a good summary in there of where INVOLVE's kind of independent perspective on what they're hearing about, how we go about engaging and involving, enabling participation in the city. So it's useful, and as Alex said, in context of thinking about what the recommendations are in there about how we go about developing our participation approaches through committees.
Thanks, Laurie. So I suppose the question from me then is, in terms of when we take the report to the full council, we will be taking whatever recommendation we agree here today in relation to public engagement and participation. But just so we're all clear, the work with INVOLVE will run in parallel with that. And if other themes come out of that, that it is felt that we should be doing as a council to make that work more effectively, then even if it's not in here, it is something that we will still be able to take up and do an engage. I just think we need to be really clear about how that all fits together, you know, moving forward in terms of, you know, what council would be agreeing.
I think that's exactly right, Chair. And I think there's also something, as I said, it's sort of, there's an interconnection here with the equality impact assessments as well, because as we, and we'll probably talk about that at a later point, when we implement the committee system in May, and we've already said repeatedly that we think it won't be the perfect model, then it'll evolve, we will undoubtedly identify things which could be improved as the months go by. And so, for example, when we were talking to representatives from disability Sheffield yesterday, we know that there'll be access challenge, we know that one of the big things there is access either physically or virtually, about being able to fully engage in those meetings, regardless of your sort of, any impairment you have. We'll probably learn things as we go when we start running a suite of committees, like seven, eight, nine committees in a month, and thinking about what the implications are for people with disabilities, disabled people in that space, sorry. So we'll have to look at it, iterate it, and we'll have to build it as we go. Same with the engagement side, really. There'll be things we will try and say, actually, that didn't work, but we can try these things instead. More fundamentally, I think this is about building into officer ways of working in terms of when we're developing strategies, when developing proposals about how the techniques and capacity we have to try and focus, to undertake engagement activities built so that when things get to committees, it's already had plenty of, it's had plenty of opportunity for public engagement. Some of that is actually about having really good work plans for the committees and that, so we can actually see where things are coming down, there's proper scheduling of how, when, as and when public can get involved, basically.
Thank you. Any comments, councillor Garbutt?
Thank you, Chair. I think we need to bear in mind that another thing we have to keep looking at, changing, adjusting, is how we measure success here. You know, none of us want to miss any parts of the community of Sheffield out, but it's very difficult to design systems that will reach every part. So we need to look at what criteria for success are, and we need to have that as a running thing. You know, we can't say, well, our criteria for success is this and that's it, no changes. We need to make sure that we review that on a regular basis.
It's a really good comment, that, because if you think about the, what we need is probably a baseline to look at where we're measuring from. So the best thing we've got right now is probably the big city conversation, which, and some of the questions that were asked in the local area committees survey, which was done over the summer period last year, so summer and autumn, sorry. So I think there's, there are some fundamentals here which the public have challenged us on, which are about having good information about how decisions are made, understanding service performance, understanding how the council's delivering for the city, but also when they can get, when people can get involved and then knowing what's happened as a result of that. All those things have come through the conversations we've all had in various guises before, in the last six to nine months. Having a baseline for that, to look at maybe not by the six-month review, but also in the, like, also on an annual basis to say, how is this performing, I think would be a really positive step for us to take, I think. And maybe there's something we could add to the papers, but Alex can come in on that, I suppose.
Through you, Chair. Members will recall that one of the things that some of the public questions in the past have asked about has been what we are going to do to be ensuring that when we are reviewing the success of this, we are using data and making sure that we're measuring the improvement that we sought in a kind of an effective way. And so what Laurie is describing, which is sort of making sure there's some kind of baseline against which the six-month review can be measuring itself, is an important part of that. And one of the work streams that the officer team are looking at at the moment is to make sure that we've got a plan for that six-month review, and that when we get there, we'll be using whatever sources of data we can make available for that point to help kind of express where there may have been areas of success or weakness in that new system for you to assess at that point.
And one other point on that was, in the equality impact assessments in your pack as well, which is, I think, the last appendix in the pack, we flagged some areas where, understandably, we can't prove this will be the case until the system's implemented, but there may be challenges on member time, officer time, citizen time. And some of the voluntary sector organisations talked to us yesterday about how do you do advocacy at scale across a number of committees, across a plethora of committees plus regulatory committees? Some of that demand and pressure, we should try and measure that as well and look at, have conversations and maybe do some survey work with members for that six-month review as well, to see what the implications have been for your workloads and your working patterns and that sort of thing. Because some of that is about understanding how successful we're making the system work. So it's about members, offices and the public as well in some of this. So we've mentioned that in the EIA, and I think that's part, should become part of the six-month review, if that makes sense.
Yes, indeed. I've got councillor Maru and councillor Richards.
Thank you, Chair. I think Laurie alluded to a conversation we had earlier this week, councillor Dale was also present, around what we've learned from the RNC work that we've done. And clearly, there, looking at the work that we've been doing, there is always a criticism, and I might be repeating myself here again, but I apologise for that, but I don't in a way as well, because I think the intentions have always been very good for the authority for the last 30 or 40 years that I've had a connection here at the highest level, that we will engage with all communities irrespective of background. But the actual action, when it comes down to it, seems to lose, it gets diluted as further and further we go along this. We're all in euphoria mode at the moment, where we say, we will do this, we'll do that, and we will continue to do that. But the test is actually going to be, and somehow, we've got to encompass that into this report in some ways, because the test for us is clearly going to be what the community really think of whether we are actually connecting or not. And that comes back to what councillor Garbutt said, that we need to keep reviewing this. And one of the things that we did raise in the meeting earlier this week was around, and I hope I'm not sort of preempting any recommendations coming out of that report, is that there should be an executive director, I don't like the word using, we're champion, but an executive director given total responsibility to make sure that this is actually done. And the other area that I think we need to strengthen upon, and I think Laurie's also alluded to that as well, is the fact that it's fine, but the highest level, exec level and the director levels will all sign up to it, members all sign up to it, everybody signs up to it, but it's how it's actually practised at the levels further below that, where the difficulties lie. And it's terribly easy to get into the trap of contacting the same old people every time. I'm sorry for the word, old people. You know what I'm trying to, you know what I'm trying to get at?
I'm hurt.
I do apologise. Same people that we keep contacting, the same people that we keep contacting. And the reason for that is they make themselves identified a little bit more, and then they become what is known in the community as the gatekeepers. So you can't, if you don't get past the gatekeepers, then you're never going to get any further within the community. And people who have good intentions of engaging with the authority choose not to because they feel as though, hang on, why should I have to go through somebody before I can actually get to speak to anybody? And you've also got to remember, a lot of these people are giving up their time for nothing. It's voluntary stuff and people have, as I said, good intentions, but give up. And that is a criticism that I hear time and time and time again within the community, from all communities, not just minority communities, all communities. It's exactly the same. So I think putting it down in words is good, but there has to be some measurement of this as we move forward, because in the last 30 or 40 years, we haven't managed to achieve what we're trying to achieve. I know we won't reach utopia, we can't, and we can't get around to everybody, and it can't be a sort of a system where 600,000 people get involved in every decision that we make. But at least what I'm trying to say is we should strengthen the skill base of the officers here as well, because we're as good as the weakest link within this authority. And if that weakest link is poor, then we can do whatever we wish as members and chief officers, we will not make that impact. And I don't know what, how you encompass that into a report, but I think it's something that we really need to have an awareness of. Thank you, Chair.
I think that's a really important point. And I think it's about how do we make that business as usual and how does every single one of us, whatever role or part we play in the council, understanding that and being able to challenge if that isn't happening in a proper, constructive and fair way? I think we've got the recommendation three about the development and agreement of a medium to long-term participation and engagement strategy. So I think we perhaps need to look at how we build that into that and how that becomes, I don't know, part of, you know, the job description of people across the council so that everyone understands that it is an important point and focus and something that we do. And I think we also need to make sure that we use the lax effectively as well, because they will have an important part to play in terms of, you know, making sure we include all of the communities across the city so that everyone can have a voice. So I think you're absolutely right, and it's important that, you know, the whole of the council is changing, there's going to be lots of training for, you know, officers, staff, members. So it's, you know, this is a vital ingredient in that, so that everybody gets the message and understands that moving forward, that's how we're going to work. So yeah, thank you. Councillor Richards.
I just sent something. Sorry. This has risen purely from some work I did many years ago, which I've re-remembered this morning because I'm taking a group of young people around the town. this morning, because I'm taking a group of young people around Town Hall this afternoon. And it was about making sure that we reach out to everybody, and that MenCap have brought out easy, oh, easy read guides to what councils do, how to vote, how to register to vote, and that if we're talking about reaching out to all groups to make sure that they can participate, then people with learning disabilities and what information we provide for them is really important. So if we could have a think about that, that's for Laurie, actually, I think, but it's something, I know that in Rotherham, a group called Speak Up have worked on, and I'm sure there must be similar groups in Sheffield. And I have to say that reading the, what's called the easy read guides, I think we could probably all use them, because they are, they put it at the most simple explanation of what a council does and why you need to be involved. So I don't know whether we have done it already, Laurie, but can I put it on your huge list of things to do, please?
Thank you, Chair. You certainly can, it's a great idea, and in fact, I'll keep coming back to this. So we had this, we had a long conversation yesterday with the Sheffield Quality Partnership, and should put on record, thanks for their time that they gave us, myself and Alex, yesterday to talk through not only the committee system, but the implications about how people with different protective characteristics in Sheffield get involved in participation and things like that. So it was, it was a really good meeting. One of the things that came up repeatedly was less about, just about how people participate, but actually having the knowledge about how you get involved in a system, so less about, I know when a consultation's happening, or I know when a meeting's happening. It was almost like the end-to-end pathway of having a clarity about what public meetings are coming up, what issues are going to be on their agendas, and also if you raised an issue, knowing where to go, what was going to happen with it, and then being kept in the loop as to what happened as a result. And that has come up consistently through the conversations we had with members of the public before Christmas, but also it's particularly important for those community organisations and the people they represent, for us to demonstrate we're taking on board what they're doing, and being really honest and clear with them about what's happening. Some of that also comes into the things like that we've discussed here about work planning in terms of the committees as well, because then that way is being really clear about when issues are coming up, what items are there, and then it helps those organisations, particularly for advocacy purposes, to know where they need to put their focus and effort. So I think you're absolutely right, and so having something that's a really simple guide to the committee system is going to be complicated for a lot of people, but it's not just about the committee system, is it? It's about every entry point of the council and what will happen. So I think there's something comprehensive here about, it goes, gets based as communications, but it's not, is it? It's actually about information and information support for every citizen, about something simple about how the council's going to work, and I think we need to, we need to think that through and take some actions on it, to be honest. That's all right.
Thanks, Laurie. And I think that's really important, and I suppose we can give ourselves a little pat on the back, because we did that with the principals, didn't we? You know, we realised early on that we've got very jargonistic and very complicated, and we have, you know, pared those down to hopefully play in English, so, yeah, I think that's quite important. Thank you. Any other comments on these recommendations, one to 14?
Sorry, what's been said already, I was speaking to somebody on Saturday in the community, he was an officer of the council, been working for us for, since he was an apprentice, and knew the committee system well from the past, and he said the problem with the LAXs is that many, they may be taken over by organisations out there who will attend and influence rather than residents, and we do need to make sure residents are really, really encouraged and encouraged to attend and take their proper part. And in terms of the easy read, we used to have, in the Learning Disability Partnership Board, I don't know whether it still runs or it's still in existence, but there was an easy read version of various council policies that were coming out. I think it was done by officers rather than an organisation who specialised in that, but I think you're absolutely right. They have been to council and asked for easy read versions of the budget, which I don't know how you produce an easy read version of the budget, but anyway, that's what they wanted, and I think our councillors were able, our officers were able to produce a version of that one, which was very difficult, I imagine. Anyway, so I think absolutely right. And we can get too comfortable with groups that we meet with regularly, and we don't need to open the field up.
Councillor Richards?
Birmingham City Council had a play of how the budget is put together, and it was ma, I know, I know, how do I know this, really interesting stuff? And it toured around, and it had been put together by people just observing the budget process, and then putting a play together about how it works, so that people could understand it, and the real pressures and dilemmas of a budget, not just this is how you put a budget together, but this is how it feels when you're doing it because of X, Y and Z. I'm waiting, somebody's supposed to be sending me the video of it, which I will gladly share with all the other anaeraks on this committee.
And that could probably then be the first task for the Finance Subcommittee next year, putting together a play for the budget. Councillor Maruith?
Just following on from what Shonad said there, there were, there were actually plays that were done in this authority around equalities issues, where they brought in bit part actors from various dramas, and set up scenarios around people's prejudices for staff. And it was, it was one of the best training that I ever got here, because it was absolute, and they were playing out these scenarios, and this council has actually done it before, but not on budgets, that's a boring subject, but it was...
Step outside!
Sorry, sorry, sorry. Chair, I've ordered, we love audit, Shonad and I, we volunteer every year for that. So, yeah, so it has been done, so it might be an idea that something like that is re-engaged, because I think I remember some of the actors were from casualty and various different places that came in.
And actually, it's a really, you feel more engaged, don't you, because you're not just sat watching a room full of people talking, you're watching something real, so, yeah, I get that. Whoever he is, if he's available, absolutely. And we look forward to the audit play.
It's better than Zoom.
Are we all happy to agree, recommendations one, well, no, we're going to, any amendments, sorry, to recommendations one to 14? No? Okay, moving swiftly on, Alex.
So the next section of your report deals with full council. Again, this is an evolution of recommendations that you have previously seen. I'm not going to spell out all the areas where it's altered, but to draw your attention to some key things. So under the section about council procedure rules, recommendation 19, you had a discussion at your last committee meeting about how some of this should work, and what did we mean by clear voting practices and so on. So some of that has been clarified in the recommendations. There is also, 21 is slightly clearer about what happens when a petition threshold is met in the new world, and so we're saying there is, we maintain that right for debate at council in that new system. Recommendations 24 to 26, these are those ones which I gave you an on-the-fly redraft of during the last meeting, and then we had a discussion about, where I think we recognised that it was important that decisions should be taken on the basis of proper detailed reports. We recognise that there should be a mechanism by which you're clear that decisions can only be taken in one place, and so either committees or council has power for something, and there needs to be a system for council to withdraw that power in an organised way if it wishes to. And so this is, this is our final pitch, a way of kind of explaining that clearly and setting out a mechanism by which those things will be achieved.
Any comments? Councillor Austin?
Thank you. It's probably easiest, I've just got a few to start with, just a few sort of really, probably really straightforward questions that can just be answered very quickly, so... So if I just go through them in sort of order, my first point is on number 19, which, yes, thank you, that is much clearer, and happy with the words you've put in there. Recommendation 20, it says, practice of voting in parts to be discouraged in favour of a more transparent mechanism. I'm not quite clear what the more transparent mechanism is.
Is that an opaque reference?
Well, my boss just turned to me and said, explain your fudge. So, look, we, I think, have had feedback from officers and the public that say that when this happens, it's not a clear way of transacting business. My understanding is that the Budget Council meeting was at some points confusing, and that there was an aspect to voting in parts that might have been related to that. No, I'm forgiving, I'm wrong. Sorry, so anyway, I'll withdraw that, my apologies. You can tell I didn't watch. Nevertheless, voting in parts not being, sorry, not being as clear and transparent as it perhaps ought to be, it's a confusing way of voting, and it does lead to some uncertainty about what has been exactly agreed and when and so on, it leads to poor practice, with motions being put forward that are incredibly complicated and long and detailed, on the basis that there will be an option for voting in parts that enable you to kind of pick that apart and pull bones out of it. It would be, it would be better practice to be clearer about making amendments to a recommendation, to a motion, being clear on a substantive motion that results from amended process and then voting on that, if there is a need to vote on all the individual parts of it, to carry out a vote on all the individual parts of it. I know that doesn't sound like fun, but it might lead to some better discipline about the way that motions are drafted, and the way that the political process is expected to transpire around them. However, I don't, I don't hate the Lord Mayor, dear, says the Lord Mayor-elect, yeah, no. So I have fudged it because I didn't feel equipped to propose exactly, or to define, or restrain councillors on this practice. I didn't personally think it was a constitutional matter to ban the practice, but I do think that it's something that should be set out in this kind of terms, so that the Lord Mayor can exercise their discretion and seek to influence the way that business is done at full council, so that it becomes more transparent and effective.
So in a nutshell, if we want to carry on having the chaos that we've always had, we can actually continue to do that, because we're only being discouraged from doing that. But I think what I'm hearing, and correct me if I'm wrong, Alex, is when we get to the bit where we say, in voting for, we will be voting against, this, this and this, and abstaining on that, that and that, so we're all actually left knowing ultimately whether something's been carried or not, but we don't actually know what bits have and haven't. We're saying that the Lord Mayor can use her discretion to say, right, we will take an individual vote on every, every paragraph within the motion, so that everyone is clear whether that paragraph has been passed or fallen.
What you would ideally do is you would do that as a series of amendments to the substantive motion, so that at the end of that process, you can read out an amended substantive motion, and then full council can vote on that. That is the part where the clarity comes out.
We all look forward to that with interest.
I was just going to say that I think what happens in the parts bit is because when you actually see amendments from other groups, you may think, well, that's not the amendment I would have chosen, because ours is far superior, but there's a paragraph in somebody else's amendment, isn't there? And you think, whoa, we actually didn't think of that, and that's dead good. So that's the bit that people then want to put in, isn't it? Because they think this, and that's quite difficult in the sense that we get the amendments at a certain time, and it's not about horse trading, it's actually about the things that people want us to do, which is saying, okay, the Lib Dem amendment is totally rubbish because Sue didn't write it, but, but two of those paragraphs were obviously written by Sue, and those are the two we would like to take, and that there has to be some way of accommodating that. Did I get through that?
Yeah.
Chair, may I just, I think this conversation sort of demonstrates why I didn't try and constrain it with a detailed alternative, and instead kind of we set a principle of how we think it perhaps would be improved, but on the detail, what I'm used to is that the mover of the motion reserves the right to amend their motion in response to amendments, and therefore the substantive would change in that mechanism. But all of this can be explored in the context of, we recognise that it ought to be discouraged, and that the Lord Mayor would have a role in that.
Councillor Garbutt?
Thank you. On this point, I think motions would be made a lot more palatable if parties left out reference to their own achievements, you know, this happened because the Labour, or this happened because the Greens were, or attacking other parties. So if we left out the praise of your own party or the attacking of other parties, I think a lot of motions will be made a lot simpler and more palatable to more people.
So we take the politics out of politics?
Yeah, I'm not too sure how that would work for politicians.
Councillor Austin and councillor Labour?
Sorry, Chair, just to come back very briefly on this point, and I do want to go further down, I just think this would actually make the Whip's job an absolute nightmare, and I'm just speaking as a deputy whip, because obviously, we just have vote after vote after vote, and I'm not sure it would make the poor officers writing the minutes and trying to record everything their job a lot easier. However, as it is merely a discouragement and something to be explored, I think that's something we can probably leave to another day, unless my colleagues disagree with you.
Before I bring you back in, Sue, does anybody have any more comments on number 20, or can I let Sue carry on?
I just think this will be self-regulated, because once you're in a committee system, then the relationship will change at full council, because everybody's engaged in the decision-making process, and therefore, when motions are brought, which are concentrated openly, this council does, then there'll be a lot more clarity in the amendments, and I think it will be a much more straightforward process than what we've got at the moment, which is really political debate, not about how this council runs, and I think we will find that change out, actually. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. So I'll go back to, that was 20, so 21, yeah, quite happy with that, it's now clearer on what we asked for. On 22, can I just check, by current expectations of advance notice, the last sentence, is that current expectations as in the rules we've implemented for Covid, or current expectations as they were before?
Sensible question. This wasn't intended to be a fudge in this case, apologies if it looks like one. This is intended to say that the current, the mechanisms that are in use right now that were changed as a result of Covid should sustain, because the benefits around being able to ensure that there's an organised response to the public questionnaire at the meeting has been sort of considered to be considerable. It helps us make sure that people get decent answers to their questions in the moment.
One of the things we've fought hard and long for in this council is this little old lady complex that we have, in that if a little old lady turns up for a council meeting even just a few minutes before to ask her question, she is able to answer that question there and then, and if not, get an answer at that meeting, get a promise of a response later. We fought and fought and fought through the years to maintain that. We understand under Covid that we've had to bring Covid rules in, and that, you know, it changed everything, and it went forward. But I think a lot of us around this table would like to be able to return to the system where a little old lady can turn up at a meeting and ask her question, or a little old gentleman, if it comes to that.
So under the current system, that's still possible, so the discretion lies with the Chair. So I think all we're pleading for here is a bit of order, so that we can actually try and make sure that we run a professional meeting.
and make sure that we run a professional meeting. If we're not talking about, you know, one or two meetings here, we're talking about eight to nine meetings and it would just make life a little bit easier. It also helps us because what we're trying to do as well is look at ways that we can be inclusive and if people want to remote into the meeting, we need advance notice of that, et cetera. So, having some simple rule in that doesn't seem to be, so, for example, some councils ask for things a week in advance, has to be written, et cetera, et cetera. So, you know, if we, the way we currently operate, we're asking on a Monday for meetings on a Wednesday, you know, noon on a Monday is the deadline, is simply to try and make sure that we've got some professionalism in the way that we operate and run our meeting, but the discretion will remain with the Chair to allow anyone turning up on the day to come and ask their question. And I would ask the committee to just consider whether that's a reasonable position to land with this. Clearly, if you feel more strongly about it, then we'll have to try and accommodate it. Thank you.
So, just to be absolutely clear, the current expectation is that if someone, if an individual turns up on the day with a question, then the Lord Mayor can say, yes, I will agree to that question being asked, that is part of the current expectations and does regularly. Okay, thank you.
Can we just ask the Chair through you, does that include committees?
Sorry, yeah, I think that's what I was just trying to say, that, I mean, it currently applies to the, to any committee, any Chair could do that and has that discretion to do that. What, I suppose, if you are not clear about that as councillors, maybe we need to make sure that Chairs are clear, that they've got that discretion so that they don't feel compromised at the point in time when they're asked as to whether they can allow a question that's not been given advance notice.
Chair, through you, could I just ask if, can you, because not everybody, we have been in Covid for two years, could you just explain clearly what the difference was from how it was before? Just to remind us all.
Yeah, so Sheffield's always been very open in the way that it engages with the public at its meetings. So, anybody arriving to be present at a meeting was allowed to ask a question. There's a simple slip of paper that took their name, email address and what the outline of the question was and I have, with full council meetings starting at two o'clock, we did have sort of a mythical deadline of ten to two so that we could try and make sure the Chief Executive had all the questions before the meeting. But I have sat next to the Chief Executive when one of the committee clerks has been coming in with questions at ten past two, they're still there and we add them on and they get asked. And it's very rare that any of those questions didn't receive some form of response, but of course there would be occasions where if the question is, we didn't know, members didn't know the questions were going to be asked, their only response would be, thank you for your question, we'll take that away and we'll get back to you with a response. The difference now is that all questions have to be received by the Democratic Services Team by twelve noon on the Monday for a Wednesday meeting and therefore when the members are responding to the questions on the Wednesday, at the Wednesday meeting, they have full answers and are able to say whether they can do something to assist at that meeting rather than taking it away and dealing with it. So, I think there's pros and cons to both, but if we maintain the discretion of the Chair, I would hope that that would cover all eventualities for you.
Absolutely. I just think this, I've been subject to questions that come and are placed in front of me and maybe I know something about it and maybe sometimes I don't know anything about it. So, I know how difficult that can be for a Cabinet member or co-op exec member, it will be difficult at times, but I think there's something really good about being, allowing people in Sheffield to come and ask a question to their council members anytime they want to. And I know we don't want it to go on all afternoon, question after question after question. Sometimes we've allowed questions to go on past the deadline depending on what they are, but I think there's something affordable about being able to turn up at your council and ask a Cabinet member, whether you're putting them on the spot or not, and ask a question. And we know there's some questions can be a little bit contrived to put people on the spot, but I think that's powerful, of course, isn't it? That's about politics.
Yeah, I mean, that's just reminded me that one of the things that was becoming quite difficult was where there were questions that were being presented at the last minute that actually, if there'd have been time to consider them, it may have been that it wasn't an appropriate question because it was about personal circumstances of a member or of an officer even. And that filter process is really, really difficult when you have to do it on the spot in a meeting. And that, again, doesn't add to the professionalism of the meeting as a whole and can end up with, you know, there being some difficult situations to be dealt with in the moment and people not feeling like they understand why they are suddenly in the public frame and having a discussion about them when they're in the room and they have no advance notice of it, et cetera, et cetera. So, I think there's something about making sure that we operate a professional process and that's not about people not getting answers to those questions, but it's about making sure that the questions, when they're asked in a public domain, are appropriate, are accurate, are not defamatory, you know, and we have a responsibility as a council to just make sure that there's that because this is a published, you know, it's published to the world effectively, isn't it? We've got webcasts, we've got minutes produced, so people have a right to have some guard and protection against that happening to them as well when they're in that meeting. So, that is another point as well that was taken into consideration.
Chair, I think, I know exactly what Jill's very carefully trying to say or trying not to say, and I think any of us that have been councillors for a while do as well. And I really appreciate that consideration. And I think that was down to quite an extraordinary set of circumstances that everybody here hopes is never going to turn up again. And I don't think we can expect any officer to guard against that. But I think what we're saying now is that included in the guidelines we've got, we've got an encouragement for people to put their questions and petitions in in plenty of time if possible, but we're still, and we will make sure, that there is still the opportunity for either the Lord Mayor or the Chair of the Committee to hear a question from a member of the public at any time, at any meeting. So, I think that helps a lot.
Sorry, I think I've probably not been clear in what we're saying. Anyone can turn up for a meeting whenever they want. It's the ability to ask a question and get a response on the day probably is the thing that we're talking about here, isn't it? So, okay, just to be clear.
I've got councillor Austin then, Laurie.
I think it might, I think I would like to add an amendment to the end of this recommendation, Chair, but if there's more comments to be made, then I'll wait until they've been made.
Thank you. I've written one down too.
Very brief, the Chair. I think it'd be remiss not to mention this because I think that this was an issue raised by the Equality Partnership yesterday and particularly colleagues in disability Sheffield about ensuring that, valuing that access to a question on the day, but also that reasonable adjustments wouldn't, basically disability wouldn't be an obstacle for that person to be able to do that. I think we ensure we do that. Obviously now, we also have that opportunity for hybrid options as well, so when we talk about those routes in for people, about raising questions and saying, ideally you'd submit it in advance, also saying, I want to come on the day and ask it, ask the question or can I come and do it, can I do that virtually, would be really beneficial for some people as well. Essentially, we just need to make sure that we will, we'll take, we'll ensure there are reasonable adjustments in place to enable people to participate on the day if they need to, I think is probably the right terminology.
Any more comments before we get councillor Austin's amendment?
Just a quick one. We want the members of the public as much as possible to go to local area committees to ask their questions because their questions are pertinent in our locality, that's the best place to put them.
Thank you, Chair, I'm sorry. So, my proposal is that we add to the end of recommendation 22, be maintained, so we continue that sentence such that questioners be encouraged to submit their question two days prior to the meeting to enable a clear response, but that the option of submitting a question up to the start of the meeting to be asked at the discretion of the Chair be clearly, sorry, I lost my words now.
I think that's too cumbersome.
Too cumbersome. Okay, do I make it a bit? So, make it into different sentences. So, the question is be encouraged to submit questions two days prior to the meeting to enable a clear response.
Yeah.
Full stop. The option for a question to be submitted at any time prior to the start of the meeting and asked at the Chair's discretion should be clearly available.
Would anybody like to step in that, please? Thank you, councillor Lee. All those in favour? Anyone against? Any abstentions? You've gone in this. Did we capture that? Moving swiftly on to the next section, leadership, key councillors, where? Oh, sorry, sir, I'm getting giddy, sorry. I apologise.
No, apologies to you, Chair, I shouldn't have shouted out there, but I just want, this hopefully is just really simple. So, question 23, it says that the current time limit, can I just check, was that an hour? Is that my understanding, is that still an hour? Thank you. It is. And my last comment on this section, Chair, is just that, and at some point, and I'm sorry because I haven't had time to go back through all the previous papers, but we had a recommendation in that concerned members' questions and that seems to have, I don't know, disappeared for a good reason or just been lost by accident?
Yes.
Or I'm misremembering?
There is a possibility, so we should check. There certainly should be something here about members' questions that would have been to Cabinet members simply to become questions to Chairs of Committees. If it's gone, it's going to be because we've been, we've had six different officers all collaborated on rewriting the thing and it's got lost in a track change. So, what I think we should do, probably, if you give us a few minutes, is by the end of the meeting, we'll find the text that was in the previous report, we'll amend this report to include that recommendation and then we'll make sure it's covered as we proceed.
If I can, just to help, my recollection of the text that was in before was that we weren't very keen on it and that's why it was asked for it to go away.
Oh, hold on, what are you talking about? In terms of questions, questions from?
This is questions from other councillors to, I mean, as it is now, Cabinet members, but as will be Chairs of Committees.
So, I'm sorry, I don't recall.
There was some limit on it, there was a comment in it about there being no more than one question per councillor or something.
Ah, there was.
And we asked you to change it in comments and then it seems to have disappeared. Now, it's just disappeared and we're keeping it as it is, perfectly happy, but if it's disappeared, I don't want it to reappear at the council meeting and us not to have thought it through.
Yeah, it's a really good, really good point. I think, sorry, second.
I think that, I think that's the point, I think the fact that we're not making a change to the current practice means it doesn't need to specifically be dealt with.
I mean, except that it would become questions to Cabinet, to Chairs, yeah. So, that part might need to be captured, or it goes without saying, I suppose, but...
As Sue says, there was a proposal that should only be one question per member and has that been removed completely?
Yeah.
Right.
I do apologise, it's just a drafting error, we'll get it sorted by the end of the meeting.
Hi, Alex. councillor Lee.
I was going to say the same, I think it was eight to four councillors, one question each, and in practice, that doesn't happen anyway, it's usually, it'll be usually each shadow Cabinet members who ask, generally, but not always, obviously, ask the questions and they're usually given an opportunity to have one per page or some, I'm not sure how flexible that is, but I think if it's going to stay as it is, stay the same, I'm happy with that.
And councillor Austin, anything more? Okay, are we all, I'm sorry.
Taking up councillor Lee's point about who asks the questions, because at the moment, sorry, as councillor Lee says, it's usually a shadow or a different party spokesperson who asks, but if they're likely to be on the same committee and have them taken part in that decision or anything they're asking about, are we saying you can't have been on that committee in order to ask a question because otherwise it actually doesn't make sense, does it? If the committee I'm on has made a decision or I want to ask something of the committee Chair, I'm likely to be on that committee, so why am I asking it? And why am I asking you a question about something I was involved in?
Because you can.
Indeed, but it makes no sense, does it?
And I don't think, and personally, when we were talking about it, we were thinking that actually, under Committees, it's probably something that will not happen as much, it'll just happen on the things that are just going to full council, which might be a good thing or might be a bad thing, we'll have to decide that later on, but I think it's something that will change as they evolve, exactly, that's the word.
And it's probably just something that the governance committee moving forward may need to just keep an eye on to check, to make sure it's working properly. But councillor Lee.
I haven't found the bit A. A helpful person on the other end of the line, Sarah Bennett, has found the bit that you really could make me resweat there. Nineteen A, I think, is the bit that we're looking for, which is about Cabinet, questions to Cabinet members becoming questions to Chairs. And yes, you're right, we've deleted the bit that tried to restrict how many questions anyone could ask at the request of the committee, but no other, no other change has been made. So, I don't think there's a whole thing we've deleted unless I've misunderstood what you're looking for.
Can we just call it member questions and then that clarifies it? Member questions to Chairs.
I think it just needs to distinguish because there is a difference between public questions and member questions because...
Yeah, you can either vote to amend that if you wish to now, or, I mean, I can just take it away that I'll put the word members into that, that's fine, it's not substantive.
Can just put it, it's the first word in A, comma, member questions.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Are we all happy with that amendment? Anybody? Okay. councillor Lee, councillor Gilligan.
So, if I'm on another committee and I see a decision's been made elsewhere, am I allowed to ask that committee a question? Yes, so that would be a member question. That's, that's fine.
Was it? No, it wasn't. Are we, are we all finished with the?
Sorry, this is Alex's fault because I overheard what he was saying. So, just to be clear, what we're saying is that members can ask at full council questions of the Chairs of Committees and obviously that is most likely to be by somebody who is not on that committee or some, it may not. At Committees, can members have member questions because... At committees, can members have member questions because I don't, it may be because I haven't got that, but I don't recall, but I do know that happens or used to happen.
Yeah, so there won't be a section on committees that is member questions like there is on full council, on an agenda in the same way, however, members have the right to attend a committee in the same way as the member of the public does if they want to go and ask a question on a particular matter, but I'd expect it probably to be done more of an informal manner.
Shaun had shaken her head at me. But councillor Lee first.
At the moment, well, no, I'm not sure at the moment, but when we, last year when we had Cabinet meetings, members were not allowed to ask questions at a Cabinet meeting, they would ask them at full council, but they didn't, weren't allowed to ask, and that, I don't know when that was, I don't know when it started, that was, well, it's always been the case, but that's what was agreed many, many years back, that you could ask your questions at full council, and I think at committees, I'm not sure that you would want a member who wasn't on that committee asking a question, you can ask somebody who was on the committee to ask the question, please.
Yeah, I think that, sorry, yeah, that's right, there's no restriction on that, you can't stop a member, a member of the council has the same right as a member of the public to turn up at any meeting and ask a question, so I'm not sure where the rule came from, but it's not something that's written into the constitution and it's been, it sounds like it's been more of a practice than a rule of such, I wasn't aware of it, okay.
I suppose in reality, it's just the optics of another council member turning up to a committee or at the Cabinet and asking a question, whereas if we have the, if we have the place on the full council, it would just, it would just make sense to go there and ask the relevant member the question there as opposed to going to the committee.
I've just thought of something, I mean, it is standard practice for us to get the people who are on the committee to ask the questions unless, in the case of a calling, but at the moment, we have an individual member who's the only one who represents that party, and as far as being transparent concerned, are we going to say that the only place he can ask a question is at full council? That's, you know, it's not, it's not happened since Ann Smith's days and I can't remember what she did, but I think she asked all the questions at the full council, but that's what this will mean and I think we've got to decide whether we're happy with that.
In this new committee environment, it's going to be really important that councillors on various different committees stay aware of the work that's being done by other committees and that opportunities for cross-pollination are encouraged so that there is kind of a work across the piece and that decisions being made on one topic can take account of the views of another committee. What I anticipate is that you would have a system where councillors from other committees are likely to be invited to be present for other, for committee business on occasion, for example, I can imagine that an adults committee might be taking a decision on a matter which has implications for children in a different, in a certain way, but the Strategy and Resources Committee has said although that's cross-cutting, we'd like the adults committee to lead on it, however, do so in consultation with the Chair of the Children's Committee, ensure that there is a link, and you'd expect therefore that the Chair of the Children's Committee would be invited to come along for that item. If they did, it would be at the discretion of the Chair as to how and when they were invited to speak and contribute. And that discretion of the Chair piece, I think will become very important. In this new committee environment, I imagine you will find a practice which says when councillors come, it'll be clear on what basis they are there, are they a member of another committee, are they a Chair of another committee, have they come and had a conversation with the Chair in advance and said, I really want to have a word if you wouldn't mind during the public session because such and such issues come up at another committee, I'd like to be able to have a say. And so I would expect that the discretion of the Chair to enable that kind of cross-pollination in that, in that way is likely to be powerful. We haven't put something in the constitutional provisions that formalises that, because we want to allow for that fluid mechanism between the committees, it does put a lot of power with the Chair, but it's important that it does because as you've already sort of indicated today, ultimately it's the members of that committee who have the authority to make decisions on that matter and you don't want a free-for-all where you've got, you know, thirty, forty councillors all turning up to a committee and expecting that they're able to partake in a debate on a topic, it wouldn't be workable. So that, I think the discretion of the Chair is your, is your mechanism here and it's all about how in practice that comes to be used. We're going to be doing training and development with the Chairs of the new committees, both as individuals and with them with their committees in the new world, so that we get, we can kind of try and establish a sense of how Chairs want to operate and to get, come to a consensus way of working. So I think that, that should give you confidence about how this piece will work and I'd encourage you not to sort of try and constitutionalise it.
Thank you Alex, I've got councillor Richards and councillor Libra.
I was just thinking that we also as councillors have a representative role as community leaders and we might want to go to a committee to ask a question on behalf of the people who we represent because that council, that meeting may be making a decision which would affect and as such, you should be able to go and make the point on behalf of your electorate rather than just as you turning up.
As the monitor office indicated, that any member will be able to turn up and put a question as part of the public questions time and you would expect that the Chair of a committee would give particular space to that and if, for example, there were members and members of the public and you weren't getting through all of that, they might allow some extra space to kind of factor that in. So there's nothing preventing questions from members and obviously when they're there in that setting, they'll be representing their citizens and they'll make it clear what has motivated them to be there to ask that question. The discretion of the Chair is about really participation in the meeting proper.
Councillor Lee.
It's all getting a bit confusing, isn't it really? We've, we've got public questions and member questions clearly defined in the constitution, therefore we should stick with that and I think that if you, if you have got representations to make into committee about or issues to raise, it should be done through, with all the committee representatives of your party, in my view, and so let's not, let's not confuse things too much and we'll keep it fairly simple because if members, members' questions at full council are perfectly right and we've got mechanisms down at local area committees where you can have a public coming and ask questions, we don't need other members to come and ask questions, it's not appropriate and therefore we should take the same policy, sorry, the same approach with policy committees as well. Thank you.
Are we sufficiently happy that the constitution covers where we need to be with this, I suppose is the question? Anybody not? Moving swiftly on, leadership, key councillors, please Alex.
Okay, so again, this is largely, as you've seen it before, the areas I want to particularly draw your attention to, although you can pick up anything, is towards the end of the list of recommendations, so you have got at twenty nine, a change which we discussed last time, which is about the full council agreeing the Chairs of Committees at the, at the outset, we, as I said, we just, we did discuss this last time and the committee agreed that change, but just to obviously show you that we've got some wording that now does that. And then obviously the other big change is the bit around the Chairs or co-Chairs, which I think reflects the wording that you agreed last time, but that's the other sort of substantive change to this report.
Thank you Alex, any comments? Councillor Austin? Sorry Chair, this is really just to sort of trying to work out how this is going to work in practice, just to clarify what I think is correct, if that's all right, in terms of point twenty nine, Recommendation twenty nine. So it says the council will basically be presented with a list of Chairs and Vice-Chairs, I'm assuming these are going to be nominated by the administration, whether that's a single party or a joint party administration, basically, they'll nominate the Chairs, or, but they could choose to share the Chairs out among all parties, but that'll all be done, and they'll basically present a list and the council will ask, vote as a whole on the list. Or could come up with an alternative, yeah. So when it then says, unless the council decides in any instance not to do so, is that basically if the council then votes not to vote on the list?
In practice, what I'm expecting is that there's some committees that the, the administration may decide they're not going to put forward a Chair for, so there are some, some committees, I don't know, for example, the committees that are used to do appeals, there is a fluidity to the membership of those and it's, it's helpful to have a Chair elected in each meeting rather than defining it at full council at the beginning of the year, there might be others, so it's just important to have that flexibility in there that there's somewhere we're going to say the committee can decide for itself either each time or, you know, in general. So this is designed to enable the, basically to enable the political negotiation that could happen after an election to happen without constraining members' options, but to give that, that leeway for letting committees decide if they wish to.
Councillor Albert.
Thank you, again, it's on Recommendation twenty nine. I'd got it into my head somewhere, I'm not quite sure, that the, that the sharing out of committee Chairs and deputy Chairs would be done on a proportional basis to the number of councillors each party held, have I got that wrong then?
Yeah, because they're decided ultimately by the full council meeting, so the full, the full council is the body that is in charge of the council, appoints the people onto the committees, just exactly as it does now.
Yes, but there's negotiation going on beforehand as to who's going to be there, on there, and is it not down to the negotiators then? There's no, there's no requirement on those negotiators to provide political proportionality?
That's precisely the point, there is no requirement for the Chairs to be politically proportionate to the full council, there is a requirement for each committee and all the committees as a whole to be politically proportionate, there is an expectation, I think, that the, the distribution of Chairs needs to be allowed to be part of any political negotiation that may take place after an election, and so what the committees opted in the past to do is to leave that open to full council, which ultimately means the administration, subject to amendment at full council in that setting, can put forward something that will be either an agreement of the sort you're describing or not.
Any more comments on Recommendations twenty seven through to thirty? No amendments? Okay, individual councillors, Alex.
I think very little has been altered here, if anything, happy to commend it to you.
Any comments, anyone?
It says, oh, rather, on Recommendation thirty two, member-led refresh, but I seem to remember that we allocated it to the governance committee to be the owner of member development, to make sure that it had an official place.
Just looking to see whether I, I thought I might have included it under Section six fourteen and I actually I haven't, so yes, we have agreed that that will be the governance committee, if you'd like, if you'd like to amend it to write that in to be, to be perfectly clear, happy, of course we can do, we can do so.
Okay. This to be the responsibility of the governance committee, I suppose, C. Thirty two, C.
This to be included in the terms of reference of governance committee.
Does he, councillor Richards?
I am proposing that.
Thank you, would somebody like to second amendment please? Thank you councillor Austin. Are there, are there any other comments on these, these recommendations please? Are we all happy to agree the amendment? Anyone not? Thank you, that one is Harry. Policy committees.
Okay, so obviously you've got a bit more discussion in the report here on this topic, but most of it is, is reporting back on the process and the considerations you've given over, over time. So a few things to draw your attention to, first of all, I just want to mention Recommendation thirty eight about the seventeen policy committees, I just want to emphasise that of all the bits of this whole report, I think this is the one that is most likely to be a shifting sands consideration, you know, that by the time you get to your AGM and they, there may be new considerations from a new administration about how they want to organise these committees and so on. So I think, I just, I just wanted to flag that, that if any part of this is likely to shift, I think it's probably that, but it's important to have something on the table now that's enabling us to proceed. The other things I want to draw your attention to, which I'm not saying are necessarily the only changes, but just there's some things I want to draw your attention to, under forty six, there was obviously some discussion last time about committees setting their own agendas and we were asked to give it more consideration, you'll see that we've, or we have stuck with the recommendation that full council agrees it for the sake of helping, giving us a chance of organising a single coherent programme, but we've then said that the committees can give, will give consideration to their bits of that schedule and can then request alterations, so it still leaves space for the Chair as they currently would to say, we're not, we're not happy, could we do some in the evenings or change the way we operate or whatever it is. I can't remember whether we made some changes to forty eight that just fleshed out into a bit about, just a few specific points about terms of reference, I think that was covered in the body of the report before but may not have been in the recommendation, so I've, yeah, so I just, draw, draw attention to that. There are a few particular things I wanted to mention on the next page, so fifty one, we were asked to give a bit more thought to a sort of a six-month rule about whether, whether decisions could be overturned or not. On balance, having given this careful consideration with, with legal colleagues, what we've said here is that there will not be a rule preventing a decision being changed after a decision has been made, but in general, you would, there'll be, there would be an expectation that there would be something clear about the situation which has changed in order for a decision to be on the table again in that way, and, you know, there, there isn't a mechanism, there isn't an emergency mechanism by which decisions can be overturned. So given that the authority remains with the body that would have taken the decision, i.e. a council can undo or retake a decision that the committee's already taken, because it will no longer be on their work programme as a forward decision, so it's no longer in scope for full council to take it off the committee, you know, so, so in a sense, if this were to happen, it would be because the committee itself had for some reason changed its mind and wanted to be able to edit that within a few weeks or months of the initial decision, and we consider that to be so unlikely that if it is happening, it might be for a very good reason. So at the moment, we've opted not to put in something that specifically restricts that, however, we're conscious that some councils, many councils do have something like this, so it's something we need to keep a very close eye on, and I think if it goes wrong, you'll all know that it's gone wrong because it will have been a headline-worthy event of some sort of U-turn, so we'll know about that one if it doesn't work and we'll be needing to review that as we go along. Two more, so in, under fifty three, we previously had something that said, you know, proportionately an amount of time at committee meetings for public questions, we've now specified thirty minutes, I think proportionately was, was thirty something, see forty and a bit or something like that, so we specified thirty minutes, which in the, in the scope of a two-hour meeting plus thirty minutes for your killing point, we thought was a reasonable starting point, but since we specified something particular, I thought you might But since we've specified something particular, I thought you might want to have your attention drawn to it. And under 54, this one actually responds directly to a public question that we had at the last meeting about champions, and we've just, as promised, given it some thought and indicated that part of the way that the committee system works is that you have collective accountability for decision-making in an area. So obviously, a committee can opt to do something like that if it wishes to, but you would expect that if anybody individually has a role, it's going to be the chair, and otherwise it ought to be in the terms of reference for the whole committee to make sure that they're bearing that in mind as they take decisions.
Thank you, Alex. Any comments, please, councillor Labour.
Can you just clarify right at the start, Alex, what you said about number 38 in the annual meeting? Because surely, I'm saying surely, once it has gone through full council, that is it until a review in November and potential changes following year, is it not? Are we saying it isn't?
My anticipation is that, given that full council retains the authority to edit its constitution, that it could, if it wishes to, respond quickly to issues and make changes to this situation. We don't want that to be the case. It would be a recipe for difficulty and chaos if everything's being edited in every council meeting. We've got a system in place whereby we'll be doing a six-month review, and we expect councillors to kind of be patient and accept that we'll be storing up and understanding what issues are and including them in that process. However, currently, this is my understanding, Jill, if you're looking worried, stop me. This is something different. Currently, you've got a situation where the cabinet portfolios are somewhat changeable. The leader of the council defines those, and he responds, or she responds, to the current political priorities and environment to define that. What this committee has recommended is that we should seek to avoid too much changeability in those by aligning them to the budgets and the structures of the organisation. What I'm indicating to you is that if there's any one part of this that is likely to sort of have the attention of a leadership that says, we might want to tweak this or make this fit with our intentions for a new administration, I could imagine that being an area where it was given further consideration. Furthermore, the structure of the council is currently changing, budget considerations have been forefront of everyone's minds recently. So this bit, the alignment of those committees to budgets and structures of the council, and the possibility that a new administration has a view about how it wants to do that, I guess, and maybe I'm opening a Pandora's box that I shouldn't have if I was a restrained Conservative with a small c officer, but I just wanted to put on the radar, I think that, of all the areas of the report, that's one that you might imagine an incoming administration would have a view on and perhaps might alter. I should, I suppose, say, I'm not saying that because I have any kind of insider information about the intentions of any councillors on the council, it's just my view as an officer.
So what you're saying is, we will have seven committees regardless, but if somebody wanted to say, well, actually, you know, we don't want children and families to be one for argument's sake, we've now got a big problem with whatever, we can put that somewhere else and rename this committee this, is that what you are saying about, I'm just, I'm not too clear on what you're saying?
I'm being more open than that. I'm saying that this is something that could be tweaked more significantly than that. It's ultimately up to full council. But this committee's making a clear recommendation, you'd expect council to follow that.
So then my next question is, if this recommendation can be tweaked, what about all the other 93?
Yeah, they'll all be subject to amendment at full council.
So the ultimate decision-making body on this is full council. So we can't fetter full council's ability to change what's put forward, but that you, as a cross-party committee, working with your groups, we're hoping, you've already thought about that, so that by the time we get to full council, your groups are comfortable with where the governance committee have got to with the recommendations that are coming to it, and, when I say it, it's just a formality to actually approve it at full council. But that being said, legally, the decision sits with full council, and therefore any bit of this could effectively be changed. What I've been saying to groups is that if they think that they want to change anything from the recommendations that are coming forward from governance committee, please talk to me and my team before we get to full council, because we need a constitution agreeing on the 23rd of March.
So it's just, so just so we're clear, this is just about any amendments that we would want to put in, and if anybody wants to put any amendments in, just to make sure that we are constitutionally sound after whatever is agreed at full council, we need to run them past you and your team, Gillian. Yeah, does that now make sense, councillor Labour?
So what goes to full council in two weeks' time is agreed and is secure for the full year from May this year, with a reformal review in November.
Unless any group puts in an amendment and that amendment is carried, that is correct.
In two weeks' time. Not after May, that's what I'm on about.
Yeah, so the issue we've got is that full council is the ultimate decision-maker on this. So at any point in time, you can change anything. If collectively between the 84 of you, you agree, you get a simple majority that something should change. That includes seven committees, that includes the naming of the seven committees. What we're putting forward here and we're asking you to collectively agree and put forward is something that's workable for us for the first six months, that we can test. And if it really doesn't work, then, you know, after that six months, we can do a full review and make sure that we get it right going forward. But I think what Alex was trying to stress is that politically, say we get past May and there is a major change to the political balance, it might be that whoever is the administration wants to do something different. Now, as officers, we'll be saying, but we've got these committees aligned to budgets. So if you want to start changing the alignment of those committees come May, there's going to be a big job. It's not something that can be done simply. And please work with us, you know, we'll see what we can do, but work with us on this. So you're not, we can't fetter full council's discretion to be able to take any decision that they want to do with regard to changing the constitution. But I think it's just bearing in mind that practically, we've presented something that's aligned to portfolios and budgets for a practical reason. Let's, you know, we're all going to be new to this, we need to get into the swing of it and see how it goes, and we need six months of relative stability in order to test. Thank you.
Thank you. I've got councillor Garbutt, then councillor Richards.
Thank you. As far as I can see, this ability for full council to change the constitution has always existed, and therefore what we're saying is just bear in mind that this is the situation. As far as I can see, there's no change in that particular situation.
I suppose my experience, and that isn't necessarily the Sheffield experience, is that changing a constitution is a very serious thing, evidence from this meeting, and that it shouldn't be a simple majority to change something. That if you want to change a constitution which has been agreed, that there ought to be a larger threshold than just, you know, 49.5, 50.5 or whatever.
There isn't, there's no, within the local government legislation, there's nothing that requires anything other than a simple majority, whereas in your company, within your Companies Act, there are specific decisions that need two-thirds, et cetera. That doesn't apply in local government legislation. I'd have to double-check whether you could impose something like that, it's not something I've checked, to be honest. In fact, probably there's somebody checking it right at this very minute, so I might be able to tell you shortly whether we can do that. But there certainly isn't anything prescribed as there is in Companies Act.
I think we have to bear in mind that there's an expectation from the public that from May, we will be running a committee system, not turning it upside down for the next three months because we want to change it. And we need to really make that point in two weeks' time, that this isn't something that we want to amend in year one, wrapping start. We want to run with it, learn from it, and then make the amendments for the following year.
We are indeed.
47, extraordinary meetings to need consent of the monitoring officer. I was a bit dubious about this, not because we have a dubious monitoring officer in any way, shape or form, I will be very clear, but because meetings belong to members, and I can understand the wish not to stretch a budget, but at the same time, a committee ought to be able to make its own decision, rather than have an officer say, no, you can't. Is there some way of finding some words that say, I don't know, the leader or somebody else would have a say, final say, rather than the monitoring officer? Not, just because it doesn't, you know, a council is meant to be about its members. That's one point. 51, I think I'd be concerned about flip-flopping depending on somebody, you know, a membership. You can have a committee and sort of four people have turned up rather than the nine required, and they can say, oh, well, I didn't really like that decision last time, let's overturn it now. I think there does need to be something a bit more formal about it. And again, whether it's numbers about changing a decision, I just think that's a bit of a hostage to fortune. And number 54, at the moment, for instance, where we do have a heritage champion, they don't necessarily have to be, I think, a member of a committee which oversees that, they could be a free-roving member, but who will report to that committee when they want things, whether they're asking the champion or whatever. But it ought to be able to be a freestanding champion, rather than having to be a member of that committee, and in particular, the chair, because I think it was set up to be something that wasn't a cabinet member, it was somebody who would be, you know, somebody who revels in archaeology or something. So those are sort of, if Sue had asked these questions, she would have already have them in proper clauses, but I'm sure she's closing them as I speak. Any comments on theirs?
I'll do that, I agree with what John had just said. Well, I'm going to change things over the next little bit.
Yeah, I did want to comment on some of the other points, but just to come back to 54. I don't think, I might be wrong and I'll take advice, but I don't think the wording as it is actually determines that that person does have to be a member of the committee. It merely, if there's any decisions to be made, it's the committee that makes them. But I, yeah, so I think that does remain an option, in which case that's good, I think, because as you said, there may be somebody who, for some reason, is on different committees but has a very specific interest, so I think that's really good. And I will wait your feedback on 47. Do you want me to chat to move on to my other points before we, yeah. So I'm going back up the list. 42, and again, sorry, I read these a couple of nights ago and I've not reread them all in detail since because I was busy. So on 42, I'm sure at some point we discussed a mechanism for a request for a second one in some exceptional circumstances. I'll just ask that as a question and leave that for a minute. And then I've got a comment on 46. This is me doing my best to be sympathetic to group leaders. At the time, sort of between an election and the AGM, group leaders are often very busy people, and I just wonder whether, rather than the leader, it should either be the group whip that meets to sort out meeting times, or whether it should be the leader or his or her nominee, because I'm not sure it needs a political leader to sort out meeting times. Sorry, that's 46. So that's really sort of navel-gazing stuff, but I think it's... Well, quite.
Are you saying that rather than full council agreeing it, it should be the leader, is that what you're saying?
In consultation with the group leader or nominee or the whip.
In 42?
It's where it says the annual schedule should be done in consultation with the group leaders. I think rather than the group leaders, it either needs to be the group leader or his or her nominee, because, I'm sorry, it's a mental thing, but I can just see our group leaders. I think that's, I think that's it, apart from my only comment was on, you'll have to do that, Mike's office. 51, where I actually think that would be okay. I know Sean was a bit concerned about it, and it does very clearly say that we're going to monitor it and review it at the six-month review, so I think I would personally leave it, but it is something that we should monitor, you know, it needs to be clearly part of our monitoring list of tasks.
Thank you. I've got councillor Garbutt.
Thank you. I found where I had the idea that we were doing political splits there, and it's in recommendation 39, where it says, if council determines it should be better, it shall not be to the detriment of the political proportionality of the committee. And I think that political proportionality, I had assumed would come from the political proportionality of the chairs who would attend that meeting.
What the paper sets out is that... Okay, so on, that's fine, I think I might have missed a couple, I'll do what I can. So on 39, yeah, what the report sets out is a system whereby the chairs of the committees, whatever groups they are from, will constitute the Strategy and Resources Committee in addition to a number of other seats, as required in order to make that, make sure that committee is politically proportionate.
A bit like AV Plus then.
Sorry?
A bit like AV Plus then.
Yes, I guess, I suppose, yeah. Yeah, okay, so, yeah, so if all of the chairs were assigned politically proportionately, you might not need any additional people to join the committee, but there's an expectation at the moment that there's a way of doing it.
Okay, so that was my first one. I've got another, which is a very quick one, I hope. Recommendation 48, where it says, responsibility considering climate, could we, after climate, also put in biodiversity, comma biodiversity? And because the council has passed a motion declaring a biodiversity emergency as well, so it's a different thing connected, but we need that in there as well. Is that, is that okay? Just the insertion of that one word? Sure, yeah. And finally, paragraph, sorry, recommendation 53. At the beginning of this, we've got a list of ways in which the public can engage, but here we're sort of limiting it to a 30-minute public questions and petitions. And I'm just querying if we want to limit it to that. Are we going to say anything about how members of the public or... members of the public or civic society can be co-opted on to or give evidence to or in any other way participate in the life of the committees? Because at the moment, that's the only thing within this this set of recommendations that has anything to do with public participation.
My understanding on that was the the recommendation we've done earlier not only refers to full council in terms of public participation, but also to the committees as well. So that will all feed its way through the whole way we do business. Does that make sense? That was mine. I'm not on my own, am I? So that will be taken, that will be taken into account, not just by full council, but by the committees as well. So we've got that covered off. There's the list in recommendation number twelve. And obviously there will be the toolkit that then all the committees will get in terms of looking at how best they want to do public engagement and consultation, which will, one, suit the committee and two, the public they're engaging with and the actual issues that they're engaging on. Because different things may need to be done in different ways and it just provides that flexibility, was my understanding.
Could I come back on that then? Could we add something maybe to recommendation fifty-three? Other means of engaging the public according to the toolkit to be decided by the committee itself?
So I think officers' assumption has been that the recommendations earlier about use of a toolkit and expectations, et cetera, would be reflected in the terms of reference of the committee. And so I suggest if you want to put something additional in here, that perhaps under forty-eight, where you've listed a few specific things that will be covered in the terms of reference of the committee, you could add in there any of the bits of wording we've used in this report around, for example, an expectation that committees will be incorporating public engagement into their activity, including use of the public engagement toolkit. Something like that. You could build that in as a specific.
Sorry, just to add to that, I think the reason why fifty-three is there specifically is sort of to make sure that that continues, that practice is allowed and continues. It's not supposed to be exclusive. Yeah.
Chair, shall I just do cover some of those other issues just from an officer perspective? So in terms of fifty-one overturning the decision, just perhaps to offer some reassurance to councillor Richards, remember for an item, for that to happen, first of all, it needs to get on the agenda. So there's a whole process that you, of work programming, committee agreeing its work programme, chair involvement in that, et cetera, et cetera. So it's not that members could turn up to a meeting and say, oh, shall we, should we make a decision on something and undo something we've done last week? You know, the committees aren't able to take a decision on something that's not on their agenda and not supported by reports. So that gives you some assurance that if it happens, it'll be happening with the knowledge of the monitoring officer and, you know, it'll be in an organised way.
But if, you know, when we get, you may get a report and it will have recommendations and somebody in the meeting will say, well, okay, that recommendation is all right, but it doesn't go far enough. I want to amend that recommendation. That is a possibility. And therefore, in the same way, you could say, and while we're here, let's just put a little recommendation in. Why not?
Because if you stray from the subject of the report, you're going to be acting without proper reference to information and supporting evidence and so on in that committee meeting. Your legal advice in that meeting would advise the chair not to allow such a thing to proceed. If you were considering an item on flower beds and someone chimed in and said, while we're at it, should we build a hospital? Your legal adviser would say, that's not, that's not based on a report on this committee agenda. You're not in a position to take a decision on that matter today.
I think what's about saying that we make sure that that is actually looked at in the six months.
Remember, I mean, everything will be, and I think it does specifically say that it will be. Great. Okay, so in terms of heritage champion, yes, we already covered that it could be, it doesn't, nothing specifying it's a member of the committee. In terms of forty-two, I'll correct the question. It was about limits on task and finish. What was the question?
It was really just that we, I'm sure last time we discussed there being an exception where we could ask for an extra task and finish or to suspend one and start another.
Yeah, we've opted not to put a provision in for it, but on the expectation that if the need arises, we'll give consideration to have to allow it and that we're not likely to be able to put a lid on it ultimately. If members are asking for that work to be done. I've not built in a provision for it, but if you want to say accept under exceptional circumstances and leave it at that, then we could, then we could do so. Ultimately, it would just be a conversation between the officers and members involved.
May chair, I think to be fair, you have put under usual circumstances the limit will be. And therefore, I suppose that does imply that in exceptional circumstances, it may not be.
That will be the extent of the weasely words that as an officer I included to allow for those circumstances. But we've not opted to design a specific process for it. Forty-six. Yeah, I mean, yes, the intention of putting group leaders is to indicate that they or their nominees could do that. I wouldn't expect you'd need to amend it for that, to be clear, but you can if you wish to. In terms of forty-eight, there's a member proposed around biodiversity or there may be a member proposed for biodiversity. Of course, you can, you can make such amendments at this point if you wish to. You haven't had the benefit of seeing a full terms of reference at this point, although you will do, of course, the council will. And at that point, you may want to consider any other details that you feel should be in there. But remember that the business of the committee is not only defined by its terms of reference. Terms of reference is its standing area of authority and accountability. There will be an annual corporate plan with a set of political priorities in it and standing longer term corporate plans, including expectations of delivery on various issues by all those committees. And, you know, I'm not making any statements about whether biodiversity is more or less the sort of thing that you put in a terms of reference or in a corporate plan. But ultimately, if you sought to put everything in the terms of reference that a committee might deal with, that would be unwieldy. So that's a consideration, but it's obviously on the, for the committees to consider whether that terms of reference matter. In terms of time limit, remember there is obviously still the discretion of the chair. That's key. You know, we're putting it there again for purposes of organisation, clarity about expectation. Everyone knows what the plan is in a meeting and you've got a guillotine clause you've agreed. So it needs to be clear that you're expecting a reasonable amount of time to elapse before you say, we need to get on with it. Instead of meeting, we'll find another way to deal with your questions. But the chair will have the discretion, as always, to extend that if they wish. I think that's all the ones I picked up. Apologies for that. Forty-seven was extraordinary, Mr Monitoring Officer. Yeah, so in a brief whispered conversation, the monitoring officer suggested that it should be
to be agreed by the chair in consultation with the monitoring officer. Any extraordinary matters? And the reason why I've got to have a say in it is just practicalities on how we get it organised and scheduled. So it's the democratic services team rather than me that need that. My input. I've just got councillor Levy and then councillor Garbutt.
Thanks, Chair. A small point, but I think pertinent. In forty-eight, the use of the words business intelligence. I think it might be better to put the committees' data. Because some people might not understand what business intelligence is. The committees.
So business intelligence data means something specific. We could use other terms to describe it. We could, for example, delete both the word business and the word intelligence and merely say data. You know, that's fine. All that is intended to convey is that there will be data about the part of the organisation that that committee is, has a responsibility for and that they should be monitored.
Yeah, that's right. It is a bit chaggy, but that's all we're referring to. It's clearly, I would expect the data structures to be similar across policy committees. So you've got, you're working with comparable information. Although the performance data will be committed specifically, so that's the case. Do we know when the terms of reference will be available and they will be put together?
They're being drafted as part of the constitution. So will they be up the full council?
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Garbutt.
It's back to recommendation fifty-one again, and thinking that if we did seek to overturn something without any papers, then that violates the principle of democracy, I think. Because nobody, the members of the public wouldn't realise what was going on. So I think democratically, it would be it would be a violation of our principle on that basis. So I'm with how it stands.
Any more comments on the recommendations thirty-eight through fifty-four?
Okay, on opposed amendments?
We've got, I've got amendments for forty-six A, which is about adding in group leaders or nominee. Forty-seven for the committee chair in consultation with the monitoring officer. Forty-eight to remove business intelligence and to add the biodiversity after climate. And
Sorry, also got a bit to add on public engagement.
Oh, and Gillian's got one on public engagement that has passed me by.
So, sorry, Chair, you talked as a committee about whether the terms of reference should include something specific about public participation. So I've had a go at drafting something that just says, and the committees will consider the public participation and engagement strategy and the availability of the toolkit in order to ensure public participation in the decisions of the committee. In the work of the committee, maybe, rather than decision?
Yeah.
Would anybody like to propose on if there's a map? I think we've got to go back. I've got a document. Is everybody even agree on those? Anybody not? No extensions? It isn't exactly that. I was just thinking, when we've removed business intelligence, I know that's that when we have finished our task, will somebody read it just to make sure that it is fairly plain speak? I'm not suggesting that it is rewritten, rewritten. But if there are some words which, or maybe it needs a glossary or something with it. Because I know we get so bound up in, you know, local government speak.
Are you talking about the constitution or this report?
The constitution, not, no, no, this is a lovely report, Alex. I always think something ought to pass the sort of the my mum test. Yeah? That somebody reading it, it'll make sense.
Yeah, I think that's really important, you know. The whole purpose of this transition is to be about being accessible and involving people. So, you know, we do need to have a constitution that people can read and to understand. Absolutely. Thank you.
Strategy and Resources Policy Committee and Finance Subcommittee.
So there isn't a lot I particularly want to draw your attention to here. Again, it's something built very solidly on previous recommendations and discussions the committees had. I think under sixty-two, there's a bit there that we've added following conversations with legal colleagues about making sure that when issues are included in the Oh, actually, this isn't what I thought it was, sorry. So there's an expectation suitable communication between chairs and committees. So this is referring to what I said earlier about the kind of the cross cutting nature and making sure that committees are working across the piece. So this is, I guess, as close as we get to putting that into some kind of constitutional basis where we're saying where the individual committee is leading on something, there would be an expectation of that kind of working across the, working across the piece. Yeah, sorry, the point I thought I was going to make is elsewhere. So that's all I wanted to raise on this section.
Councillor Austin?
Yeah, just a very brief question, which I may have just missed the answer to, but it's based on sort of fifty-seven. But the question is, is it possible, now, will the Finance Subcommittee, will it be possible to have substitutes on the Finance Subcommittee? I know we've talked about strategic resources, definitely not have been, but I just wanted to clarify for that committeably.
Yeah, we've not sought to restrict that, so as any other Subcommittee, you'd be able to have substitutes. Sorry, Chair, I found the bit that I was referring to, excuse me, I just confused myself while I was talking. They're easily done. I do too much talking. It's this bit where we said that where something is delegated, that the act of doing that, of strategic resources, sorry, still inside sixty-two, sorry. It's just earlier in that paragraph. It's the bit where we're saying that if strategic resources refers something to a particular committee, that in the act of doing that, they get the authority to then cover that, even if it's not in their existing terms of reference. So it's just essentially covering, covering the rate by which that flow of delegation can work. That's, I'm just flagging it because it's new and specific.
Any more comments on fifty-five through sixty-four, please? Now, amendments, we'll move swiftly on to urgent decisions.
Okay, so again, much of this built on the discussions you've had before, the bits that aren't, it's not major, but just to draw your attention to. So under sixty-eight, we've included that, that sort of cascade of consultations. We've used a slightly different wording to the wording that was agreed by the committee, which is why I'm drawing it to your attention, but it's designed to do the same thing. The wording of sixty-nine, again, has been edited now that my legal colleagues have made better sense of what I was trying to say. Again, I think it still captures the spirit of something that was previously intended. It's to do with the way that urgent and emergency decisions are taken when officers need to be involved. And so I wanted to just make sure you spotted that's a different thing. And number seventy. Yeah, I just wanted to flag to you that, of course, under all these circumstances, everything, all the conversations we're having about urgency, just to be clear that when that happens, there will be a mechanism for a border back to committee. So that route back to the member domain is always clear.
Alex, any questions, comments?
Thank you. So it just goes right back to sixty-five, please. It's just talking about parent, sorry, sixty-five and point B. Talks about all parent committees, members and their named substitutes may act as substitute members for an urgency Subcommittee. And that then raised in my thinking, substitutes for policy committees and indeed the Finance Committee. Is it intended that there is a general pool of substitutes or that each committee has its own substitute? Because if it's a general pool of substitutes, like we've had in the past for scrutiny, I'm thinking, then that, I'd be less happy with them all being able to be part of the urgency committee. But if it's a specified substitutes for each committee, then I'm happy with it. So I'm trying to explain why I'm
Well, one answer to your question is that I wasn't aware you'd ever had a general pool of substitutes for any of your committees. So the assumption here is that that would not be the case. And that exactly for the reason you set out, that substitutes would be specific to that committee and expected to be, you know, informed as they will be receiving the papers on all issues like members of the committee would.
Any more comments? Any amendments? We're on a roll, local area committees.
I'm, if there are any changes to this area, they've escaped me in the immediate moment, so I just commend this to you.
Any comments? Keep going, Alex, scrutiny, including statutory scrutiny.
There is one substantial change in this section. a Subcommittee of only one of those two, there's an expectation that they'll both be well-informed about the business of the Subcommittee. And although we've not sought to define this for practical reasons, my expectation would be that the membership of the Health Scrutiny Subcommittee would include some, at least some members of both of those committees. I think for practical reasons that would be wise, but that will be up to groups when they nominate individuals onto that Subcommittee. So that's a substantial change, obviously it has implications for both members and officers' capacity, and you need to support another busy committee, but ultimately it's the same amount of work, because it's a busy committee, it would have been doing what it's doing, it's just the additional work to schedule and support and administer another committee, just merely conscious of the busy colleagues in the room who were up till ten o'clock last night sorting out a lack and then came in at six o'clock this morning to set up the same equipment in here, so it's not to be underestimated, the amount of work it takes to do that, but yeah, we've included that there for, I think, good reasons.
Thank you very much, staff, we do appreciate that, because it is, yeah, it is a lot of work. Any comments on these recommendations, anyone? All happy with them? Excellent, other committees?
No changes have been made to this section since last time the committee considered this report.
Any comments, or are we happy with eighteen eighty-one? Yep, excellent, scheme of delegation.
No, no, I am, I was just going to say, before we move on to scheme of delegation, can I answer Sean Ed's question about the majority in council? So this was a question about whether voting in full council to change the constitution could be done other than by a simple majority. So I am being advised that, subject to the provisions of any enactment, all questions coming or arising before a local authority shall be decided by a majority of the members present and voting thereon at a meeting of the authority. So in simple terms, that is, unless it says somewhere else in law, everything that's decided by full council should be done as a simple majority. Laurie's reminded me that if we voted to move to a mayoral system of governance, you need a two-third majority on that, so there's an example, the specific legislative provision, but I can say we're definitely not going to need that, at least for ten years, so, thank you.
I think Sean Ed was hoping to bring that in next year. Thank you for that, Gillian, that's helpful. No, we've done the committed scheme of delegation, Alex, thank you.
Okay, so Alex has definitely handed this one over to me, because I've got, I've got to say that the advice that we gave you on the property decisions last time wasn't exactly complete, so what we were looking at was part of the work of the, part of the delegation, so when, now the lawyers have gone away, have a look at the scheme of delegation that relates to the property elements, there are some specifics within the property elements, and to say that everything over hundred-and-fifty thousand needs to go to the Strategy and Resources Committee is oversimplifying it to a certain degree. So what I am, I'll give you a bit of an outline of what I'm talking about, because it probably doesn't make sense at the moment. So, for example, under the scheme, leaders' scheme, the chief property officer may make any property decisions not reserved to either cabinet or an individual cabinet member, and the thresholds are set out in three different areas. So there are acquisitions of property where consideration to be paid exceeds two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, but that doesn't, so it's, again, specifically, it doesn't include acquisition of property that the council is obliged by law to complete, so there are certain transactions that we've no option on, so if we've no option on it, then it doesn't need to come forward to members for a decision on it, that's the theory behind it. The second bullet point is disposals which are not subject to a competitive process, where the consideration to be received, so the money we're going to get for it, exceeds three-hundred-thousand. And then, thirdly, disposals for less than the best consideration reasonably obtainable, where the estimate is that we're going to obtain more than hundred-and-fifty, less than hundred-and-fifty-thousand difference, so that's where the hundred-and-fifty comes in. So I think, in order to get this to a point where it's simple for us to get this through full council on the twenty-third of March, but still allow you to retain some control over how we deal with these property thresholds going forward, I've got a couple of suggested amendments to the recommendations. Let me just talk you through those and then see whether you're, how happy you are that we take that forward. I'm almost delaying the discussion, but what I'm saying is, if you look at number eighty-five, recommendation, it says at the moment, "All property-related decisions of a value of hundred-and-fifty-thousand or more shall be reserved to the Strategy and Resources Policy Committee," and ongoing review of this threshold is, which sits where the governance committees, is going to be within the governance committee's terms of reference. In fact, there's that to add on to the terms of reference for the, for that committee, for the governance committee, if it's not already there. What I'm suggesting is that instead it says that "all property-related decisions where the best consideration reasonably obtainable exceeds hundred-and-fifty-thousand shall be reserved to the Strategy and Resources Policy Committee," and "ongoing review of the existing property thresholds to be within the governance committee's terms of reference." So effectively, we're putting that immediate protection there for members to know that they've got the ability to take decisions on anything where the council is going to not accept market value for something, so if it's more than hundred-and-fifty-thousand either way on market value, that would immediately come to members to look at. With regard to the work, referring to the work of the governance committee on thresholds, I'm not proposing that we wait till May to start that, I'm going to say that we start that straight away, and it might be by the time we get to the AGM, you've got something that you're more comfortable with, but I don't think it's something that, I've got enough information to make you feel comfortable to take a decision at this point on, if that makes sense. Thank you, Chair.
Yeah, I'm a bit confused now, to be perfectly honest with you, having been in that environment for twenty-odd years, I'm terribly confused now in terms of how this has now been delegated, because it used to be a straightforward delegation of, say, hundred-and-fifty, anything above hundred-and-fifty needed a member consent, we've now started to dilute it a little bit, so if I, I'm trying to understand this, to see if I can get through this, because I don't actually feel very comfortable with this at this stage. One is the acquisitions, if I've read this correctly, anything above two-hundred-and-fifty in terms of acquisition comes to the committee, anything below that doesn't. Right, so that's correct. Disposal subject to a competitive process doesn't come to the governance committee, unless it's more than two-hundred-and-fifty?
Sorry, disposals which are not subject to a competitive process, where the consideration to be received by the council exceeds three-hundred-thousand. So if we've agreed to sell something for over three-hundred-thousand, and it's not been subject to a competitive process, that comes through to the committee.
Right, and anything less than best consideration?
Within hundred-and-fifty-thousand of best consideration.
My comments are as follows, in terms of acquisition, we're given authority to officers to agree anything up to two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand.
Yes, and that's, that's the current delegation that's been in place for the last ten years.
And that wasn't mentioned initially, was it?
No, because when we, when we had, I based the advice on conversations, it was when the lawyers sat down and looked at it, they said, "That actually is not quite how it works, it works differently, and I want to make sure that you've got the correct information in front of you."
So all in on from that, so what can happen, sorry to bore you silly here, it's quite important, I think that we're giving delegations to officers of quite substantial amounts of money, and if you remember Doncaster, and what happened in Doncaster twenty-odd years ago, or thirty years ago, where officers were actually picked up on doing deals which were not very transparent, is the best way to describe it, and we, in this authority, actually followed on from that and said, "Look, we should be doing, not directly from Doncaster, we should be putting safeguards in place for officers as well as members making these sort of decisions." And in terms of acquisitions, I mean, if I was an officer, I have powers to make decisions up to two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand pounds, and that is presumably delegated to the chief property officer, but what, who monitors the chief property officer, how is the decision taken that a chief property officer has got that correct? Because acquisitions can be more problematic than even disposals, because it can be open to all sorts of, say, I knew, so, I'm not saying this happens, by the way, but all I'm trying to do here is be devil's advocate, and if we push something like this through, and it comes back to us at a future time where it has been in the past, and you have to defend that position, including the officers, I could say, "Right, Sue, it's really worth two-twenty-five, but since you are agree two-fifty with you." Is there any monitoring of that? I know, I know what the answer would be, we are all RICS qualified and we'll do this and we'll do that, but having said that, there are some people within that, within the authority that probably not, and it's only the chief property officer, so I do have reservations about that, and if it was agreed previously, then I think it's something that members could choose to have a discussion about, because the numbers of acquisitions are not that high. I mean, it's a fairly minimum level, I mean, it's like acquiring anything in the city centre through compulsory purchase, or acquiring something in Dunham through compulsory purchase, that's where acquisition is, acquisitions are not a large part of the business there. And then, I'm losing my thread here, disposal not subject to competitive process, delegations up to three-hundred-thousand, and anything more than three-hundred-thousand needs to come to governance. My follow-up, again, being devil's advocate here, I'm not saying this is wrong or in any way whatsoever, but if I was in that position, again, I wouldn't say three-hundred-thousand, because three-hundred-thousand pretty much covers quite a lot of properties in this city. I know everybody keeps talking about property inflation, but you've got to look at where these properties are, and the majority of the properties are in areas where the values fall below three-hundred-thousand, and therefore, that is quite a wide-ranging delegation that we're giving to the officers. And in terms of less than best consideration, if there's anything less than best consideration, which is, it's like, even, take a family example, if somebody decides to sell their house, it's worth two-hundred, and they sell it for fifty-thousand pounds, they will have a family discussion about it, for why you've actually done it, and that's the reason, what I'm saying, when you're selling less than best consideration, it gives the officers' delegation up to hundred-and-fifty, again, I'm not talking about garden extensions which are ten or fifteen thousand pounds or five or six thousand pounds, something more substantial than that can really, should work in my... So what was there in the first place is what I thought was, covers quite a lot of it, which is, "All property-related decisions of a value of a hundred-and-fifty-kilometre or more shall be reserved," and then monitored for six months and see what sort of volume we're getting through, which is important, because what also worries me here as well, I sound very negative, and I'm not trying to be, I'm trying to be quite positive about trying to move forward and be transparent to the public as well, is if there's a decision taken on revenue, say, for instance, we take an office block for two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand pounds, it may be annual, rental may well be two-hundred-and-fifty, say, St Paul's, we took twenty thousand square feet there, the rental for the year would be two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, but the actual local authority commitment would not be two-hundred-and-fifty, it will be the length of the lease, which is, I'm coming off capital, I'm going on to revenue here, which will be the length of the lease, which if it was ten years, is two-point-five million, that we've taken a decision on, even if there's a review in five years' time. So I find this rather difficult, because having been, to some extent, out of this environment for some time, there is a safeguarding situation that we have to build in here, and majority of the decisions, to be fair, if we leave these thresholds, majority of the decisions in everybody's ward would be taken out of their hands anyway, we wouldn't have any comments to make, we would have a cursory, say, for instance, something happens in Fordwood, we are selling your property, but just as an information thing, but comments will not come back, and what I'm trying to refer to there is, we've all had issues where we've got properties in our wards, where people from the community are very much interested in it, and if that is a decision that's completely delegated to somebody else, what am I to say to the members of the public, say, "Look, I've got no decision there, it has happened"? So I'm nervous about this, and as I said, that's my take on it, if the rest of the members choose to continue with that, that's fair enough, and that's just my personal opinion, and I will shut up, Chair.
I think it's really important and valuable that we've actually got you on the committee and can talk us through this, because it's not something that I'm particularly familiar with.
Well, I also, I'm still engaged with the Association of Chief Estates Surveyors, I still attend a lot of their sessions, and other authorities are very different in the way they operate, and I totally understand, if it's in the South, where the values are exceptionally high, then these figures sound fairly low, but if the majority, if the majority of the properties in our city are not that sort of figures, and I'm, it's both ways that I'm actually looking at it from, and at the end of the day, it should be a member decision, I think.
Yeah, it's important that we hear what you've got to say, so thank you.
Thank you, and I think what I'd ask you to think about is how you feel about the current system, because what we're proposing, what I'm proposing here, is not to change the current system, so if it's a decision that has been taken by officers, or the chief property officer effectively, over the last number of years, it will continue post-May to be a decision taken by the chief property officer. The difference I was trying to capture with the hundred-and-fifty-thousand, like I say, that was, it wasn't wrong, it was just not full enough of an answer, to be honest, to capture it all, is to make sure that every decision that's currently taken by an individual cabinet member goes to a committee, and I think that's the principle I would, I would like the committee to allow to go forward, and then from then, I think it's important that we do a piece of work that looks at it in a bit more detail, so that you understand volumes, you understand what types of decisions, et cetera, and we can do that. Once we get past twenty-third of March, we can spend a bit more time, if members want to, on drilling down into that and having a look at it and seeing what it works. So what I'm asking is that we take forward for the twenty-third of March, a process that is, if an officer is currently taking a decision relating to property, that they continue to do so. Any decision that would have been taken by an ICM post-May will go to a committee, and we can do the drafting to match that, and I can get it circulated round to you.
So, oh yeah, councillor Richards.
So that was something I was just going to ask, was about, if we continue with what we have currently written as eighty-five, what would the volume of... taken by the chief property officer. The difference I was trying to capture with the 150,000, like I say, that was, it wasn't wrong, it was just not full enough of an answer, to be honest, to capture it all, is to make sure that every decision that's currently taken by an individual cabinet member goes to a committee. And I think that's the principle I would like the committee to allow to go forward. And then from then, I think it's important that we do a piece of work that looks at it in a bit more detail, so that you understand volumes, you understand what types of decisions, et cetera. And we can do that. Once we get past 23rd of March, we can spend a bit more time, if members want to, on drilling down into that and having a look at it and seeing what it works. So what I'm asking is that we take forward for the 23rd of March, a process that is, if an officer is currently taking a decision relating to property, that they continue to do so. Any decision that would have been taken by an ICM post-May will go to a committee, and we can do the drafting to match that, and I can get it circulated around to you.
So, oh yeah, councillor Richards.
That was something I was just going to ask, was about, if we continue with what we have currently written as 85, what would the volume of work be for that? Inasmuch as this, is it something that will clutter up a committee? Is it something that will end up, people will say, "I think we need a subcommittee on this, because there's just so much work"? Because I don't know those things. What I don't want is for small items, if you like, to constantly go to committee. And I think, looking at property prices, where even houses in Burngrieve now are going for over 100,000, that 150 isn't an unreasonable, sorry, might be considered unreasonable. And that I think when we had it last time, the proposal was 200, was it not? And it was reduced. So I think that's something I'd like to know before deciding, because I think what Gillian has said about continuing the same system, but then having a big drill down on it, probably makes sense in terms of continuity of business.
So, as you may gather by the fact that the report in my name previously had this, frankly, wrong, this is not my specialist area. And I'm glad that we've now got more advice from officers that leads us into this discussion. So I'm not going to comment on the benefit or the accuracy of any particular threshold, but I don't think that should be the business of this report really anyway. And we might have led you into this in a way that perhaps was unhelpful. What we're seeking to do here is to design a committee system in governance, and we're looking to make sure that our decision-making mechanisms, as currently stand, continue to work effectively in the new world, in the committee's world, and that the benefits of being in a committee model are realised. What Jill has set out, which is translating the current threshold, which, unless you wish to correct us now, we understand to have been working reasonably effectively for the past few years, with the possible exception that thresholds might be raising, as was recommended last time, but we haven't come to you with detail about that, that translating that into the committee system would be as Jill has set out, that you're saying that the decision you need to make is, where do decisions that were being made by an individual cabinet member, which can't be done in that way in the new model, where do they go? The stuff that was done by cabinet, we're clear, would be done by a committee. Stuff that was done by an officer, we have no reason, due to the change to a committee system, to edit that. There's nothing intrinsic in this move that would suggest you need to edit that. So the question is, where does an IEM decision go? And Jill's proposing that that goes to committee as well. So there's some detail around that, that we're talking about thresholds, but I'd like to encourage you to consider, as being put forward, that essentially a continuation of the thresholds, more or less, is, sort of, it makes sense, because you're not then altering the actual system itself. Jill, are you there proposing some changes to the threshold? Is that right?
No, what I'm proposing is that we maintain what we've currently got. The reason why I don't like the recommendation that's in the report is because it's a blunt instrument, and it doesn't actually deal with all the nuances, what do we do with calculations of best consideration, where it's not just about money, you know, and things like that. So this kind of, it needs to be nuanced, and this is a blunt instrument, and it shouldn't have been put in front of you as it is. It was tempting to do something that it's not doing. So that's why I'm just suggesting that we work, that the wording actually is just allowing the committee to do more work on this going forward, and that we don't actually change anything other than translate exactly what we've got now into a committee system. That's what I'm proposing.
I don't think we've got any choice at this particular period of time if we want this to go to committee. To council on the date, we aren't. There's too much work in this. So I don't think we've got any choice other than to do that, but to take it up as a separate issue, because obviously it's something that most of us were to wear up. You know, you've got to have specialist knowledge to deal with this. So we need, we're lucky we've got Maru to point it out to us, but we need more information before we can make a long-term decision. So the safest way to deal with it is to go with a status quo, if you like, but do exactly what we've said and take it up as an individual issue. And then we've got the opportunity to make the appropriate decisions going forward, and decisions for a modern council under a modern committee system. It might be that certain things need changing considerably, but we just don't know that now. So I'll put it as a proposal, actually, and that makes it easier, that we go forward as the system we're under now, and we take it up as an individual item to allow us to make appropriate decisions later. Good, Sue.
Thanks, Penny. That's helpful. Are we saying that we want to take that up through the governance committee so we'd keep the ongoing view of this threshold? We'll sit within the governance committee's terms of reference? So just on that, councillor Alster.
Just on a sort of practical level, I mean, ongoing review of this threshold to be within the governance committee's terms of reference, fine, but I think the concerns that have been raised mean that this should be done sooner rather than later. Now, so is it possible to add in, maybe not into the recommendation, or maybe it needs to go somewhere else in the, an amendment somewhere else in the report? I don't know. I'll tick that. That we recommend that this is dealt with at the earliest opportunity, or that we have concerns that the reviews, that these levels need review?
I was merely going to second what councillor Baker had said.
Yeah, I will certainly go along with that, that we continue with the status quo, but it should be an urgent review of where we're at. I think it affects every member of this council, all 84 of us, because we always, if you look at your case load, that's where most of the stuff seems to be, if there's the council disposing of any property. And there was a reason why that was actually reduced. And also, my apologies for being a geek on this subject of section 1, 2, 3 of the Local Government Act 1972. So you probably didn't expect that. So my apologies if I've bored anybody.
Geeks are...
It feels like it's bedtime reading for them.
Being a geek is good, and it's helpful, and I thank you for your indulgence with this, because I don't think as a committee today we are in any position to make sound, proper judgements and recommendations on that, but it's imperative that we do do that so we give it proper consideration and get it right. So thank you for that. But councillor Baker, councillor Richards.
Just one thing through your chair. We always used to have a list of disposals, and councils used to have them. I haven't seen them for ages and ages. They seem to have been lost with Covid. It would be really good if they could be returned, please.
Getting excited today. So you've got to calm me down. You're going to toss some water on me, Shaunard. Yes, there used to be a disposal list that was sent to every single councillor every month, outlining what was affecting their ward and the wider wards, and I think that has been lost since I left. I think, sorry, to get that in.
Be volunteering. On this, under 88, all member-level decisions on bids for grants to be reserved to the finance subcommittee. So does that mean, basically, that finance sub also becomes a grants committee? Is that just replying for, or is that, you know, a grant giving? Because, I don't know, say we've got grants for young families, then you would expect that to be the children's committee rather than the finance committee. So I just wanted clarification.
I thought that was just about making sure we got somewhere that oversaw all of the grants, just so we weren't missing out on anything, because we thought it was being done somewhere else, and we got a proper strategic control over what was happening with them. That was, that was what I thought. Yeah. Do we need to come back to, Gillian, have you got a rewording for 85 that we can look at then, please?
I have. Alice, did you want to come in with something?
No, sorry, I thought, forgive me, I thought we'd moved on. I went to mention 89 before we finished on this area.
All right, okay. So if we, in a similar way, that talks about, 88 talks about all member-level decisions. I think we still need 85 that says all property-related decisions, that are member-level decisions are to be taken by, sorry, I'll start again. All property-related decisions deemed to be taken by members are reserved, shall be reserved to the Strategy and Resources Policy Committee, because that was one of the things we were trying to put in here, the fact that actually decisions on property matters were reserved to Strategy and Resources. So I think that still needs to be here. And then, instead of A, just another bullet point in there, an ongoing review of thresholds to be within the governance committee's terms of reference, I think that's relevant, and a specific review of the existing property thresholds to be started immediately.
Yes, sorry, it might be, at the beginning of this item, if I would have mentioned just 89, which is, I think, new, it's something we indicated that would need to exist. It's there for obvious reasons, but I just wanted to draw to your attention.
Thank you. Any more comments on recommendations 82 to 89? Penny, are you still happy to propose Gillian's wording? Peter, you have a second there. Everybody in agreement with that? Anyone? Thank you. All agree.
Yes, Chair, so obviously we've skipped over the staffing relationships and, oh, sorry. Exactly, I just wanted to mention...
Oh, the bottom of my page, I missed it.
Oh, sorry, bottom of your page. I see. Yes, so 613 is here. As before, there are no specific recommendations in this section. Of course, this is an area of huge focus for us at the moment, and all the work to make sure that we know how the pipeline of decisions that comes up through the officer world comes forward in an organised way, enabling members to put together their detailed work programmes for the committees and so on, is underway. I should mention, for example, that we've identified the need, I think, for there to be shadow work programmes for these policy committees, already available for the chairs and members of those committees to consider, as soon as they are appointed to those committees in May, which means officers and presumably existing corporate exec members will need to have a view on populating some kind of forward plan of, here's what's coming, here are the things you might want to consider. And there'll be certain decisions which are urgently needed on procurement of things and so on, that committees might need to be taken as soon as May or early June. So there's a degree to which we need to make sure that that whole pipeline is organised and clear. And obviously committees will have an opportunity to shape that programme, but early doors, there's going to be some urgent things to consider. So all of that kind of work is encapsulated inside, I would say, this part of the report that talks about everything we're doing on the officer side to organise and ensure that we are ready. And as I mentioned before, there's ongoing, open processes happening at the moment with democratic services, member support, policy team, that are shaping those teams to fit with the new world.
Thanks, Chair. Is it possible for current scrutiny boards and transitional committees to make suggestions towards, to the future committees, of things that might be on their work programme? Because obviously these things have been covered by them at the moment.
Not only is it possible, I would say it's advisable. Amongst other things, by the way, we, you recall, we had a kind of interim report back from the transitional committees that gave into your inquiry process, here's what we've done and how useful it's been and what we've learned. The other thing is, we need to make sure that by the end of the year, we've got another version of that that's made available to all the committees and influences our learning and development programme for new members of committees and so on. So absolutely, they should feed in, and there's other things we need to make sure we're learning from them as they close down operations and as the new world starts as well.
Thank you. Any other comments on staffing, relationships and kids' work?
Sure. At 6.13.4, second dark bullet point, is BAU business as usual, or does it mean something else? Sorry. What's your line?
I do apologise. My jargon fountain just overflowed on that one. Yes, it is business as usual.
Top of the class, Shaunard. Well guessed.
Sorry, what I mean to indicate there is that, at the point of the whole council changing from one governance system to another, we are doing a whole range of induction and, sorry, of development and training and information provision for officers to help them make that transition. However, in future, when senior officers, managers and others arrive in this organisation, the likelihood is that they, most of them, won't have had any experience of working in a committee system. And so as part of our business-as-usual induction of them, we need to make sure we also help them understand how this council works.
Thank you. Any more points on there? Ongoing review of governance?
So I believe these recommendations have been only very slightly altered, just to refer to the ongoing work involved. I don't think there's anything else substantial here. If there is, I'm overlooking it. But otherwise, I commend this to you. You previously agreed that this was a necessity.
Normal service resumed. We've got councillor Richards and councillor Alster.
It was just to add, under the recommendation 91 and member development.
Chair, I feel I should say, there'll be a whole range of other things on the governance committee's terms of reference, but more than happy to specify that one in addition.
Of course, yeah.
I've completely forgotten what it was going to be. Oh, yes. In line with Shaunard's question, but one, can the LAX be referred to as local area committees rather than as LAX, please? It's no problem.
Because they could be looked after children.
Exactly. Well, having just been at a meeting about looked after children last...
In fact, Chair, can we just double-check that the report before it goes, councillor, will not contain any such items? Thank you.
It's about getting rid of the acronym, sorry. I was just saying, because LAX has two different meanings, as we pointed out at our discussion last...
Any more comments? 92, 94? Councillor Richards, are you proposing the amendment to 91? Thank you. Would somebody like to second it? Oh, councillor Alster. It's got, absolutely, absolutely, thank you. Brave man. Are we all happy to agree that amendment to number 91? Yep. Thank you very much.
Members, if you think you're finished, I'm terribly sorry. I'm sure that in consideration of the recommendations above, as you are about to vote on the report as a whole, you're forgiven for just highlighting the important bits at the back of this report.
Can you before you do that?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
I was going to suggest we have a five-minute comfort break, because we have been sat quite a long time.
Oh, yeah, I do apologize.
I mean, I know we're sort of at a crucial stage, but it just seems like this is probably, if we're going to have a break, it's the best time to do that. We have been sat here now for almost three hours, which is... So I'm sorry I've made you all sit for so long, but we'll take 10 minutes, if that's okay. Thank you, everyone.
So, what I was, what I'd like to do, just before you get to your vote on the whole report as amended, which would conclude the meeting, I mentioned at the outset that we've somewhat filled out legal implications, financial implications and equality opportunity implications. These may yet develop somewhat before full council, I think, especially on the equalities and the financial side, where the, you know, any work, any further work that we do that puts more clarity into those things.
Who's next? Will you go into the mic?
Oh, sorry, am I speaking too quietly? I have new hearing aids in my, a sense of how loud speakers all up the swany. Sorry. Right. Thank you, great.
How charming, dear.
Where was I? So, yes, so there may yet be some changes to reflect what's in the constitution that's going to go alongside the reports for council. And as the report also indicates, there may need to be some additional material that goes with the report for council, if there's anything explanatory needed to go along with the constitution. But at the moment, I don't know whether there is a need for that, so that will be as necessary. Given that council is the decision-maker, I hope you're willing to concede that that's allowable, although obviously, in an ideal world, you'd be seeing the whole picture before it went there. It's just where we are. The key bit, of course, is that we've got a big appendix on here, which is your Equality Impact Assessment, which is the first time that you've seen this in a public setting. Needless to say, this work, an EQIA, is something that one commences at the outset of a project and that you kind of keep live and edit and add to as work proceeds. So, officers are at pains to point out that this is a live document and that it'll continue to change, both up to the point of full council making a decision and beyond that. We had some excellent feedback yesterday, as Laurie mentioned, from a meeting with partners and stakeholders in this. And Laurie, I wonder if you want to just take a couple of moments to say anything else about the EQIA to reflect the work that's gone into it. Obviously, members will have been bearing it in mind as they make these decisions, but just to kind of give a few explanatory words before we move on to the substantive vote.
Through you, Chair. I think that's, yeah, absolutely. So, obviously, as Alex said, it's a live document. It's something we will maintain and will carry forward as the committee system's implemented because, as is referenced in there, some of the things we're going to have to see in action, to see if, to see what the implications are of that, and consult with citizens who are participating in the system, but also members and officers as well. As you've seen from the summary that I've put in the main body of the paper, there are probably a suite of issues which really do stand out, and it sort of covers most of the protected characteristics that are listed in there in the EIA anyway. There is a big opportunity on this, as we discussed at the last meeting, to embed equalities, opportunity, equality, diversity and inclusion, thinking and practice in all the decisions we make. And we had a really good conversation in this committee just at the last meeting about that. I think we should reinforce that. Everything from the Strategy and Resources Committee to the individual policy committees have got responsibility to ensure and demand that, to see that as part of proposals and policy development. And so, we should ensure that is, and hopefully that should drive member and officer behaviour through that. We've carried that in here. There's definitely something about the physical meetings versus, about the accessibility to that. We obviously try and ensure we provide, ensure we can accommodate sort of reasonable adjustments for people to get into meetings and get out of meetings and participate fully. Obviously, that has implications across protected characteristics, depending on person circumstances. There is also something more broadly about how the wider engagement conversation we had earlier enables people to participate in different ways in early stages of decision-making and development. You'll see our flag that a physical meeting, and I think we're going to have to see how that plays out in terms of, obviously, most of the meetings are going to be here in the town hall, which have got accessible rooms. We have an accessable access guide, which provides advice for people coming to visit the town hall about how to access the meeting. There is an issue in here about ensuring that people have options around the hybrid technology we now have, to ensure that it's not a solution for everybody, but actually will enable people to participate in the committee meetings if they can't physically be here in person. But you can imagine the things we've discussed in the committee about time of meetings, does have implications depending on whether you've got caring responsibilities, whether you've got, you're in full-time work, for example, and therefore you can't come during the day and that sort of thing. I think there are some challenges around timing, about the amount of time the meetings take up. I think, again, it's a sort of, we'll have to see how it beds in. But if you look at, we've got that suite of committees, plus subcommittees, plus regulatory committees, and obviously the work that takes place behind the scenes to ensure that those meetings have got the right papers, got the right content. There is a potential pressure on member and officer time, but also, as we heard from colleagues in the Equality Partnership yesterday, pressure on voluntary sector and community organisations to undertake advocacy on behalf of their kind of networks, which potentially puts pressure on that. Again, something we need to look at as part of the review. And just finally, really, really important point, which was heavily reinforced by the Equality Partnership yesterday about that importance of communication. We talked about it earlier, but it's essential so that people know how to navigate the system, and that was the phrase used quite a lot yesterday. Navigating a leader cabinet model is complicated enough. Having multiple policy committees probably changes the game a little bit for us, for members of the public as well, so we need to work that through in a way that's really clear and transparent. The only other point I would make is, obviously, we'd like, I think we should look at this as part of the six-month review. We do need to look at how we get a baseline to how the impact of the committee system is having, because it's not just about specific protected characteristics, it's about all our population and everybody, and everybody carries protected characteristics, and thinking about how we ensure that we know whether the committee system is proving effective, are engaging people, improving knowledge and information about how the system works. So, we need to think about how we do that. And just finally, what would be really valuable is probably when the Governance Committee meets after the implementation, to probably have the EIA on that agenda as well, to then, just at the first appropriate meeting, to reflect on what are we hearing back as part of the implementation of the committee system and all the things we need to provide mitigations for where people are, if it's producing barriers at some point, and we should keep it regularly under review as well.
Thanks, Laurie, that's really helpful. And I think particularly this, you know, about a baseline, because if, you know, we need something that we're measuring against, don't we? Because otherwise, we don't know what we're doing, so I think that's quite important. Anybody got any comments, questions? Councillor Garbutt?
Thank you. Yeah, I was just wondering if there was any mileage to be gained from applying some of these accessibility questions to the toolkit of how we engage the public, to see if each of these can be addressed and, you know, anyone then can use any of those, depending on what, you know, what's on offer at the time. Because at the moment, we've got a toolkit, we've got what we want, but they aren't together, so there may be some mileage in putting them together.
Good point. Any more?
It's called, it's Managing Employee Reductions, MER, but it's usually a change process. It usually refers to a change process in the organisation, so restructuring effectively.
May I comment on this, Chair? So, speaking of jargon, this is a Sheffield-specific piece of jargon. I've not encountered this before, it's a really interesting one. Yes, Sheffield has a system of defining what type of staff change is going on. It's to do with making sure that it's clear to unions and staff what the purpose of a piece of change is. When there is a piece of change that puts any individual at risk in any sense, it tends to be defined as an MER, Managing Employee Reductions, as opposed to an achieving change, which is something that's being done for the purpose of making a change happen. Now, in this circumstance, the change process that we're going through with staff is more akin, I would say, to an achieving change, because as you say, it's actually about expanding the ability we have to do certain things. But as it happens, in doing that, without going to detail, which wouldn't be appropriate in this setting, there are some areas of the structure where individuals are not all necessarily finding themselves in a favourable circumstance personally. Obviously, this is all being worked through with the unions and so on, but as a result, the formal definition of that has been an MER, Managing Employee Reductions. But to be absolutely clear, we are not overall reducing the envelope of employees in this service.
Thanks, Alex. Any more comments? Any particular we need to do with?
Yeah. Yeah, sorry, it was just a really simple question, and I may have missed it in the report, in which case I apologise. But are we actually getting, interview is probably the wrong word, but are we actually asking anybody who leaves the organisation or indeed comes into the organisation whether the change in process has affected their decision? And likewise, is there something in the future to be considered, and I'm thinking on the top of my head, so it may be rubbish, that when councillors choose to stand down, as opposed to losing an election, because we're in a rather different position, whether that change may have been influenced by the change in process? And maybe there's something to be, there may be useful feedback there, I'm just thinking over time.
Is that something we can do?
Obviously, there's a, we can talk to, we can talk about member exit interviews. We do do exit interviews for staff, don't we? So, maybe I'll put that up with our HR colleagues, because that will make complete sense, actually. It'll be useful.
I was going to say, it might be interesting also to see whether the converse of whether people decide to stand for the council because they can't wait to be on committees, or officers are attracted to working here because it'll be a very different experience. Or will it? I don't know, but I just thought we ought to capture that somewhere.
Yeah, absolutely right, we did. So, a bit more work for somebody. Okay, are we happy to move to the recommendations? No?
I was just going to add, the only other thing, the other thing we can do as well is, obviously, we have quite a wide network of staff engagement forums and also some focused on people with protected characteristics, but also more general kind of portfolio ones. We can use that as a barometer to kind of test people's experiences, how the system beds in as well. We have done historically a regular staff survey as well, so it's probably something we should test through that. Maybe quite specifically, but also look at some other indicators around understanding of change and sort of morale and that sort of thing as well.
Thank you, Laurie. All happy to move to the recommendations that we have on page one.
As amended.
As amended. Very important, as amended. So, recommendation one, all those in favour? Any against? That's unanimous, thank you. And recommendation two, which comes with an A, B and a C, all those in favour? And again, unanimous, thank you. Thank you all for your patience and your contributions with morning, and officers for doing all the hard work. All go and have a well-deserved lunch break, you definitely have earned it. And our next meeting is scheduled for the twenty-second of March in the Council Chamber. What time?
Do you know what? We should have a, sorry, at the risk of holding them... I don't think we are yet certain whether that meeting is necessary. You have, of course, just referred the main business of this committee during this year to committee, sorry, to council. There is a possibility that there could be some work, like, for example, member development programmes and things, that you may wish to take in a formal setting, but at the moment, I'm actually not expecting you to need that committee meeting, and that we'll just, we'll be talking with you informally between now and then.
So, we will say to be confirmed. Is that... Yeah.
Sorry, Chair, I just hate to drag things out, but I've also got in my diary a meeting on the twenty-ninth, is that? That may have just been an old one that I put in my diary ages ago.
Yeah, it might be a legacy. We'll lock it down and make sure we're absolutely clear about what dates are what.
Chair, can I just say, you know, talking of geeky Amorax, how much I've actually enjoyed this. I know it's glaring there. And I'd also like to thank you for chairing it, because it hasn't been easy getting all this stuff through. And I actually think that we, as a committee, have worked together very nicely.
I so much agree with Sean Ed.
You do so much.
I think that's my line.
But, I mean, and I think what's just happened now is what's got us through here. And I think, Julie, you've done that, because you're always laughing and joking, and you always bring humour in it. So, we've all picked it up, we've all gone with it, and we've all been quite open and honest. And you know what? I think you should all congratulate yourselves, because I think you've done brilliant.
Shall we say that for our post-council party? Yeah, on the twen...
Can we do that? I think you see, I see that at section three point three of this report, I'd have included something for the attention of council that specifies how well the committees work together on this. And the fact that stage recommendations are unanimous, I think, also speaks volumes.
Councillor Garbutt?
I feel a bit left out if I don't say I totally agree.
I think, from my perspective, it has been a pleasure to chair this committee. You know, you have all worked extremely hard, and we have got more hard work to come, so I wasn't actually going to say anything at this meeting today, because we're not quite there yet, are we? So, we don't have to pat ourselves on the back just too soon. But thank you all very much. It has been a pleasure to work with all of you. There has been a lot of hard work, and hopefully, this will be the start of things to come in the new municipal year. So, thank you all very much, and good afternoon.